Okay, thank you everyone for allowing us a quick break. We are going to resume our agenda. We're still on yesterday's agenda. We have one more consent item that was pulled for discussion and that is item four C.
Four L Mayor.
Four L? Four L.
Four L was pulled by Councilmember Jane yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Action on-
No, I didn't pull four L.
I, I pulled it Nora.
I didn't pull four L.
My apologies.
No, nobody's.
Yeah. Oh, I had Chahal, four L. Is that correct? Okay, four L is action on a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement with the Energy Council for the Bay Area Regional Heat Pump Water Heater Contractor Incentive Program. Vice, Vice Mayor Chahal.
Thank you Mayor. I'm supporting the motion as such, but I only needed to find out like we do have a rebate program of $500 and I got some numbers how we did in the past. So can we increase to make it more lucrative to have electric heaters, water pump, what is called heat pump water heaters? Can we increase, think of increasing that amount to 1,000 what we are proposing on the proposal basically, our own rebate program?
Councilmember Chahal, sorry Vice Mayor Chahal, Manwalt Nettie, Chief Electric Utility Officer, just want to make sure I understand the question. So, so the new rebate is for a thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yes, the new rebate is for a thousand dollars. It is being increased as part of this program.
So under that program is, but that program will be executed by Bay Area Regional Heat Water Contractors, right? Through the contractors, right?
That's correct.
I'm, I'm asking our own rebate program which goes directly to the house. As a resident if I wanna do that, that's only 500 I think, right?
That's correct and that was limited. That did not include the natural gas water heaters. This new program does include the replacement of natural gas water here, here. So we expect it will be much more successful.
Okay, and can we have this program in parallel if we have funds? Because I know we did not use much funds in the past. So that we make it more encouraging for residents to do whatever we are giving to the contractors, we make it for residents.
So the, yeah, the electric to electric is $500 right now. We can take a look. We're always looking for ways to improve it. Certainly we can go back and talk to staff and see if there's opportunities to, to improve the existing one. Right now, we're very excited about this new program because we, the fact that we can go from gas to electric now, I think is gonna make a significant difference.
Okay.
Take that back and, and take a look if that's feasible. But this, this is just for this specific contract and this is just for natural gas to electric.
Natural gas. Thank you very much Director. Okay. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve item four L.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
But I did have a comment.
Okay, um, is that it Vice Mayor?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, so the thing is, if you take an electric water heater, you've got, already got electricity, 240 volt electricity going to that water heater. So the upgrade to a heat pump is less costly. If you go from a gas and the majority of water heaters are gas water heaters. So then you have to run electricity and then you have to get an electrical contractor and it's more expensive. So the rebate being higher for gas makes sense. Just wanted to tell people, but I support the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? All right, Assistant City Clerk, roll call vote.
Sure. The motion before you is staff recommendation number one, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement with the Energy Council for the Bay Area Regional Heat Pump Water Heater Contractor Incentive Program. And two, authorize the city manager to approve modifications to the cooperative agreement that do not materially change the benefits to or obligations of the city under the agreement.
Okay.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chahal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, and that passes unanimously. And okay, instead of going to reports and special committees and city manager reports, we'll do that at the end of today's meeting. So that concludes yesterday's meeting. Now we're moving to today's meeting. So Councilmember Becker, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I would like to know if we can move item number two to before item number one because I'm thinking that item one will be a little longer. And maybe get those out of the way kind of.
It's only item two is shorter because we have a big professional staff here for item one.
Okay.
Could we keep it the same please?
Yeah, that's fine. Just, just an idea.
Appreciate it. All right. So now we're gonna move into today's special city council meeting. Now, I don't, do I have to go through roll call and all that again? I'm hoping not. City Clerk?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna go straight into public presentations. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a presentation on something that's not on the agenda? Do we have any hands?
I do not see any hands. I do not have any ecomments and I do not have any emails under the public comment email.
Okay, we're gonna move to item number one, presentation on solid waste rate study findings and recommendations for fiscal year 2021, 2021, 22. City Manager?
Setting myself up mute. So we're gonna have Craig provide a presentation. It's not 187 slides, it's 35. Craig?
Thirty-five.
Yes, and actually, you know, I do have, I've got a couple pieces of good news. So one that actually it's probably only about 25 when I get rid of some of the place slides in between topics. So that's good. I know you're all happy after last night about that news too. So, and then secondly, the good news is that, you know, with our rate study that we prepared to analyze the current rates of, in the contracts and the costs. That, that we have good news to share with everybody that the rates are actually trending lower than we projected. And so I will go through all that in the presentation tonight. So thank you very much for having me. Craig Moback, Director of Public Works. I'm here with Dave Staub, Deputy Director of Public Works and Gar Schultz from R3 Consulting. And I really want to thank the two of them for the work that they've done on the presentation as well as all the, the work that went in. And can you all see my screen and presentation yet?
Oh Craig, we cannot see your screen.
Okay.
Not yet.
Let me try and fix that.
It's coming. Here we go. Yes, we can see it now.
Okay, great. So there we go. All good there? Yep, perfect. Thank you. And so I wanted to thank again Dave and Gar Schultz from R3 and all the work that they did on this. And so really what the, the rate study and analysis that was prepared does is it looks at our rates and does a full breakdown in terms of all of our costs for the program and goes through and provides an opportunity to look at how we spread them out to all the containers and the bins that we use in the city and to make sure that, that costs are equitable. And so we haven't done one of these in a while and it was important that we do this when we went through the new contracts and we talked to council about that we would be coming back with this. So tonight I'm gonna go through a little bit of a background in terms of the solid waste contracts, go through the methodology that we used in the rate analysis. And then I'm gonna break down the rates into the, the four main components that build them up into what we call the bundled rate that the residency. But the components are the garbage and there's a few different parts to that. And then we have yard trimmings, recycling and the cleanup campaign. Then I'll, I'll show those bundled rates in terms of what the residency for the subscription that each one of them subscribed for. And then I want to touch on COVID-19 impacts. I know there's been some discussions about that. So I want to share what the, you know, there hasn't been a lot of impacts, but kind of what they've been in terms of COVID and what that means for rates. I want to talk about our reserves. We have a couple different types of reserves. So we'll go through those. And then I'll take the bundled rates and compare those up with some of the countywide averages. So you can see how we're doing in Santa Clara. And then I want to touch a little on the low income rate assistance program. There were some discussions with council in the past and wanted to see some different options to bolster that program a little bit. And then I'll wrap it up with some next steps and recommendations. So just starting off in the background, you know, several years ago, we went through a multi-year effort on solid waste contracts. Those contracts were coming due and, and we were really in a good place from a negotiation perspective because we had a different, a lot of different options to choose from. So we went through quite a lengthy process, a lot of engagement with the public, surveys, various council meetings. I think there is over probably about 15 different touchpoints through the few years on the, the agreements, the potential cost, what the rates might be. And then ultimately, we also set some council policy and then council approved recommendations and a path forward on how we are gonna deal with some of the changes in regards to the Senate Bill 1383 that dealt with organic. So we were able to make those decisions, move on and ultimately get into new contracts with Mission Trail Waste Systems for the garbage, Green Waste Recovery for processing and Recology South Bay for recyclables. And we are, already had a contract for the landfill with Republic Services. That's still in place through the end of 24. So you know, we'll be coming back in several years to start looking into that. But one of the things I do want to point out when we are going through all the contracts and renewing those, one thing that we knew for sure is that no matter what, pricing was gonna go up. And so I wanted to go through kind of the four main reasons on why we knew that. One, we're in lengthy agreements that we're finishing up and during those agreements, the labor costs far outpace what, what were in the contracts. So we're getting a very good deal. And we knew as those contracts ended, they would be reset and we'd be paying the current market value. Secondly, when you enter into long-term agreements for solid waste, it includes replacing the fleet of vehicles for both Mission Trail and Recology. Their vehicles were old, in need of replacement. And so it's very common for these contracts that vehicles are replaced under them. So it was gonna include that. And the compliance with SB 1383, you know, we had a lot of engagement with the public and with the council on this about different options. Ultimately, in 2019, council elected to move forward with the mixed waste processing program. And so we ceased negotiations on the other options and then executed contracts with mixed waste processing in mind. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out for the recycling, the, the commodities market and recycling has gone down quite a bit. Where you used to be able to make a profit off recyclables, no longer, you know, it costs money now to dispose of them. And so the, the China National Sword Policy basically stopped taking in recyclables. And so that changed the market significantly. So we knew that costs were going up. And as you recall, when we talked about costs and where they're gonna be at, you know, we said they, they could be upwards of approximately 57%, you know, over the course of the next three years. So that was, we went through a lot of different models and what those costs would be. And I want to touch a little bit on the estimates in 2019. So in 2019, when we were talking about, you know, what cost might be, we ballparked some of the most common you know, garbage containers that the public uses. And so those are the 32 gallon and then the three cubic yard bins, which is the larger dumpster style. And I'll talk a little bit more on garbage carts versus bins here as we move forward. But what we did in 2019 was ballpark the 21, 22 costs. So you see in the second column there, what we thought costs were gonna be in 21, 22. And through this rate study, you know, we went through a lot of data, all of our costs, all of the information we have on tonnages. All the information we have on, you know, who has what types of carts, who has what types of bins, really to, to mine all that data. And R3 did a really good job at doing that. And so we went through the rate study and when we built back up the rates, you see in the third column there, what the rate study found. So you can compare the two and you can see the cost difference in the fourth column and then the percentage difference there in the last column. And you'll see in, in the 32 gallon single family, our most common, 9% cheaper than what we thought the costs were going to be. So that is really good news. For the townhomes, 3.7% cheaper. Now, I do want to point out, they don't pay the clean green. That's why you see the difference in cost for the townhomes. And I'll touch on that later in the presentation. And then you see the three cubic yard bins on the commercial and multifamily side. 1.3% a little bit more than what we thought, but you'll see later on in the presentation that our, our commercial bin costs for service are very good comparatively to other cities on the countywide averages. And you'll see the multifamily, which is two and a half percent cheaper than what we thought it was going to be. So that's, that's really good news. What I did want to point out in this rate analysis, the whole goal was building equitable rates. We did not want to be in a position where, you know, some garbage carts, the bigger ones or the smaller ones are subsidizing each other. This is a program that needs to be, one, cost recovery. We're not making a profit off of this. But two, it needs to be equitable. Everybody needs to pay their fair share. So we don't want carts, you know, picking up costs for bins and vice versa. So that was really the main goal is equitable. And you'll hear me say that a few times through the presentation. So I want to talk a little bit about the methodology used. I talked about carts and bins. So when I say carts in this presentation, I'm, I'm seeing what you're saying, which you'll predominantly see in front of a residential home. You know, you have the garbage cart, you have a recycle cart. And then you have the yard clipping carts. When I'm talking about bins, I'm talking about the larger dumpster types that you'll see at a commercial property or a multifamily. There's a three cubic yard bin or a one cubic yard bin. You know, why carts versus bins? Well, because on the residential side, while a lot of residents have the carts, when you get in the multifamily and some of the other properties, they have bins and vice versa. On the commercial side, some of the properties have carts. So it's really a discussion on the carts versus bins. That's what lines with the city, aligns with the city's billing system. And it doesn't really break down on, on a residential versus commercial. And you'll see that as I go through here in the presentation when we get into the program costs. So really in terms of rate elements, what, you know, what it's all about is looking at all of our costs. What's it going to cost for the program? How much do we have to pay all the collectors in compensation? What does it cost to process the material and dispose of it? And then what are the costs to run the program and all the staff that the city puts into it? And so it's taking all those costs and then going through the analysis to distribute it into all the subscription types. So as I said, I'm going to talk about the components that make up the rates that the customer see. And I'll start off with the garbage. And this is probably one of the more complex ones because there's three different parts. So I wanted to start off with this spreadsheet kind of with the end in mind. And then we will take a step and start building up this garbage rate component that you see in the far right column. In this slide here, you'll see the customer percent breakdown for each garbage cart site, size. The 32 gallon you'll see is over 50% of our residents, followed by the 64 gallon at 31. So about 85% of our residents subscribe to those two carts. And then followed by the, the 20 gallon, which is 10% and 96 gallon, which is 6%. And I did want to take a step and talk about the 20 gallon because as I mentioned, costs and equitability. The other thing that we knew going into this study was that the 20 gallon cart was heavily subsidized. We knew that because we knew the cost we had to pay Mission Trails to service it. And we were barely capturing enough cost just for that. So we had talked about that with council as well, is that our study, you know, was most likely gonna show that those rates were gonna have to go up more than the rest. So in the third column, you'll see collection. So that's the cost that we pay Mission Trail Waste Systems to pick up the garbage carts. And then moving to the next column, you see processing and disposal. They deliver it to Green Waste Recovery who then processes the material, pulls out any recyclables, organics, and those can go to the right spots. And then the remaining gets disposed of at the landfill. So that is the cost to do those services. And then you'll see the city program costs. As I mentioned, city provides, you know, the holiday tree collection, the leaf fact, the street sweeping and all the billing, just to name a few. That all rolls up into the city program costs. And so when we add all those parts together, that's where we get the one garbage component of the rate. And so now what I'm going to do, you see the rates here in the component for 2021, I'm gonna show you how we build up each one of those parts of the garbage. And so I'm gonna start here with collection. And this is pretty straightforward. It's straight out of the agreement with Mission Trail Waste Systems. You'll see the chart to the right. It has the cart size. And those are the costs we pay for each cart for Mission Trail Waste System to go collect it. And the current agreement on July 1st, Mission Trail will be receiving a 9% increase. That was forecasted. And we know when we look at all the different bins in the city and what the services are, it's approximately 6.7 million that will be paid to Mission Trail to service those bins. And on the carts, there's approximately 3.7 million. And so by looking at that cart, you'll see that, the chart on the right, each cart has a unique compensation amount as does each bin. And that increases with the size. And also, and when we talk about the, the commercial and the bins, it increases with collection frequency. That's because on, on that side, people can have multiple collections per week. And so naturally, to be equitable, they need to be charged for that. So that is the collection costs. And now I'll move into the processing and disposal costs. And again, this is when the material goes to Green Waste Recovery. They process it in, in accordance with SB 1383. They recover the organics as well as getting extra recyclables. And so with the, the mixed waste processing, you know, they go through and they pull out all the organics in the, in the waste stream and those are then composted. And so looking at that, we know the cost per ton that Green Waste charges to process it, it's $184 a ton. We also know on the cart side, it's $172 a ton. And you'll see the, the tonnage is there that we expect to get for the bins at about 27,000. And on the carts, over 15,000. And so looking at the cost per ton, naturally you can do the calculations and figure out, okay, how much are we going to have to pay Green Waste Recovery to process all the material? Likewise, I told you that, you know, about 50% of the material will be organics and recyclables. And so that will get processed through the composting and the recyclables will be recycled. That remaining 50% is just the raw garbage will need to go to the landfill. And we know that we pay the landfill about $53 per ton. So when you work through all those numbers and then you look at all the different subscriptions that the public has in terms of the carts, then you can start distributing out the cost for each cart size. And so what those numbers boiled down to was a cost factor. And for the carts, it was about just over a nickel a gallon per week. But I do want to point out, you know, some months have four weeks of collection, some five. So it was about 4.33 collection on average per month. And so when you work through the numbers, then you will get the cost that you see on the processing and disposal to be equitable. That's how it is distributed amongst the different carts. A similar process was followed for the bins and that's about $11.28 per cubic yard. And then that gets applied accordingly. So those are, that's the second part of the garbage component. And then I want to go into the city program costs. So the city does a lot of things, as I mentioned, the street sweeping, the leaf fact, holiday tree collection. There's also the administration, the billing, there's franchise fees, and then there's a landfill post closure costs. You know, although the landfill is closed, we still have to maintain it. We still have to comply with the regulatory agencies. And there are, are things that have to be done out there. You know, this city program costs separated out by cart and bin, but each topic that you see on the slide that I went through has to be broken down separately. That's because there's different ways that it has to be done. On, you know, for instance, street sweeping, that was broken down per mile of street. And so we had to go in, take a look, R3, Dave looked at, you know, the miles of streets for carts, bins, were able to develop that breakdown. You know, we looked at a variety of factors in each one of these categories. Some dealt with what is the revenues brought in for carts versus bins. Others dealt with the tonnage of garbage carts versus bins. But each one had a unique percentage that you see there on the slides. And then when you apply those percentages against the total costs that are also shown under each category, then that's how you get the city program costs for each garbage cart size. So you'll see that in the chart to the right, the 20 gallon all the way through the 96. And those costs range from just over $6 all the way up to just over $17 for the 96 gallon. So that takes care of the garbage component of the, the, the bill. And I want to go now through the others. So I mentioned that I'll talk about yard trimmings, recycling and the cleanup campaign. So these are a little bit cleaner in terms of how to build up the rates than the garbage because they don't have the multi-parts. Yard trimmings, for instance, you know, there's just one cart size. So there's, everyone pays the same. They have the same cart for the yard trimmings. And you'll see here in the chart how it's broken down. So there's a collection compensation that's paid to Mission Trails. So that's 1075. There's composting costs for the, the yard trimmings at $2.11. And there's some city program costs that are allocated, not much, but about 18 cents. And so when you add those up, you get the rate of $13.04. You'll see that that is an increase of about $1.24 over last year. And ultimately, those revenues will generate just under $3 million to cover all the costs associated with that service. As I mentioned, Mission Trails is set to receive a 9% increase. And the rate that they charge for the collection is $10.75 per month. And then the Republic is estimated to receive approximately a 4% increase. So the cost to compost that materials is $44 a ton. So that's how the, the yard trimmings was, was built up. And that's how that rate was developed. And then that's what the customers will pay. Next, moving on to the recycling rate component, similar to the yard trimmings, you know, this is an easier one. There is only one cart. One cart size and one service. So you will see the collection compensation that is paid to Recology there at $5.36. There's a cost to process all the material. So that's at 20 cents. And then there's the city program costs that, that are very low and there's, there's supplement- And then there's the city program costs that are very low and they're supplemented by other funding received. And I'll go through that here in a minute. But that's just about two cents. So that builds up the rate for the recycling component of five dollars and fifty-eight cents. So that's up about twenty-eight cents from last year. A couple of things I do want to point out is it also includes charging for multiple collections. You know, in the past, Recology didn't pay as much attention to that because, you know, they're making money off the recyclables, so not as big of a deal. However, when that market shifted and now it is a cost to get to process and dispose of the recyclables, then that is a much bigger deal. And obviously, we were talking about being equitable. So if someone is paying, is having multiple collections a week, then obviously they should be paying for that. So that is included in our rates. And we know that the payment to Recology is set to increase from about two point eight four million to about three point two. And then we have the multiple collections that bring it up to about three point three two. And so one of the things I did want to point out, when we were talking about this and negotiating contracts, there was a lot of concern about the recyclable commodities and the risk. You know, when we got to the end of our last contract, you know, the cost of recyclables had dropped so much that Recology was actually losing money. Not a good situation to be in for them and also for the city of Santa Clara because we never want to be in a spot where, you know, potentially our collection service may be losing money and going out of business. Likewise, we knew that if the tables turned and the recycled commodities go up in price and there is value, well, hey, then the city of Santa Clara also wants to be able to, you know, take part in that money and get savings on the bills from it. So how do we do that? So what we decided upon was a couple of things. Whereas in previous contracts, we didn't pay for processing separately. Now we're going to do that so we can actually see the cost that it takes to process the material. And then we also have the ability that if we don't think Recology is giving us the best cost for processing and we think there's other options out there, that through the contract, we can go explore those other options. And if we come up with a cheaper alternative, then we can talk with Recology and shift over and start having them deliver to another place to process it. So those were the big things that we put in there kind of to alleviate risk from everybody's perspective. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out is I mentioned the city program costs very low. Why is that? Well, you know, when you buy bottles, cans, plastics in the store, you pay the CRV fee. At the end of the year, we get a portion of that back through AB nine thirty-nine. And then there's also grant funding. We take that money and then we apply it back to everybody's rates and so we're able to lower the city program costs. So that is the recycling component. And then I just want to finish up here before I go into bundled rates on the cleanup campaign. So obviously, this is the cleanup campaign that we provide once a year. You know, that service has a few different components, as you see in the slide here. There's a overall collection compensation, which is about four dollars and forty-six cents. There's a processing for getting rid of and disposing of everything at about eighty-one cents. And then there's city program costs just over a dollar. So when you add those up, that builds up what the rate is. You know, we look at all the customers that we serve, not everybody gets the cleanup campaign. So if they don't get it, then they don't pay for it. But for those that do, when you spread the costs out, it's about six dollars and twenty-eight cents a month. So that's increasing about thirty-eight cents. That's in order to generate just under two point five million dollars. And so that money is needed for about one point seven five million for collections. And so that goes into city staff who run the event, Mission Trail Waste Systems who takes an active part of it. We also have contracts with trucking companies and some outside staffing companies as well. The disposal cost, we estimate that we're going to generate about six thousand tons next year. So disposal on that is about fifty-three dollars a ton. So money is set aside for that and then the program costs, which I mentioned, and those are about four hundred thousand dollars. So those are the different components that make up the rate. And then I want to talk, you know, the bundled solid waste rates because that is what everybody sees when they get their bills. So this is for twenty twenty-one. You'll see the garbage cart size on the left-hand column. You'll see the garbage rate that we went through and built up. And you see the different numbers for each cart size, the twenty gallon all the way up to the ninety-six. You'll see the yard trimmings rate and then you'll notice that the town home, so TH is for the town homes. SF is for single family. So you see the town home rates for each cart, they do not pay the yard trimming, so that is removed from their rate. The recycling rate, straight across the board, five dollars and fifty-eight cents applied to everybody. The cleanup campaign rate of six twenty-eight. Now, again, that is only applied to people who are in the program. So if they're not in the program, they're not getting billed for the cleanup campaign. And then ultimately, when you add that up, that gets us to our bundled rates. And you'll see the bundled rates for the twenty gallon, single family at forty-two dollars, all going up for the ninety-six gallon single family at just over ninety dollars. And so let's take a little bit closer look at those rates and let's look at them compared to what the current year is. So we can see what the increase is in dollar amount as well as percent change. And really, as I mentioned, the good news is that the rates are coming in lower than what we had projected previously. And when we had looked at it last time, we were anticipating based on numbers, based on contracts, that rates could be upwards of a nineteen percent increase for this year. But you'll see here that, you know, that is not the case and they've come in quite a bit lower. We've laid out the twenty gallon, the thirty-two gallon, the sixty-four and the ninety-six, again, showing the single family and the town homes. I highlighted in green the thirty-two gallon and the sixty-four because again, I just wanted to point out, that is eighty-five percent of our residents are within that range. So you see the eleven percent roughly to thirteen percent increase for that group. The twenty gallon, we had talked about that, you know, we knew that was heavily subsidized going into the rate analysis. And when we got through the rate analysis, that did prove to be the case. So you'll see on the, while the dollar increase is about six fifty and five and a quarter, the percentage increases is higher than the rest. But what you'll see is on the rate increase for the rest, you know, everything was falling, you know, closer together in terms of being equitable. So those are the dollar change, the percent change. And the third column in twenty-one, twenty-two, that is what the bundled rate is going to be proposed for next year. Now let me just talk about some COVID nineteen impacts. That was a topic that came up. People were always curious to, hey, what are the impacts on garbage? If companies aren't, you know, in the office, they have less garbage, but more people are at home, how does all that work? And so, and those are all very good questions. And at the onset of COVID, when it first happened, you know, there's a lot of questions. We were getting calls from some of our commercial customers about, hey, I need to stop service. And typically in the past, the city's always required that each property does have garbage service. However, based on the COVID nineteen, we took a step back and said, okay, let's talk to these subscribers. And we actually allowed some of them to discontinue service if they were shut down. There was not a lot of those. I'd say there was roughly fifteen to twenty who ended up shutting off their service. Some companies downgraded the size of their bin or they reduced the frequency that they're getting served a week. But, you know, some of them still had some activity, so they did need some type of garbage bin. And we saw that, you know, on that side of things, there were some reduced tonnage. But on the residential side, we saw some increased tonnage. And so that kind of worked through to July. And then what we noticed when we did the analysis was that, you know, the analysis was from July to November, that things stayed pretty flat after that initial change and they continued to stay that way right now. So things are pretty static in the current environment. There hasn't been a lot of change since that initial change. And we're not expecting a lot of change in twenty-one, twenty-two. So what did all that do? Well, because of the way the rates are set up and how the services are paid for, you know, we pay for service that we get. And if someone reduces their bin or their, yeah, if they reduce their bin size, they're paying less. And then we are in turn paying Mission Trail Waste less based on the contracts. So a lot of the changes that took place kind of take care of themselves because we have to, we get less money in for rates, but then we pay less for the service. So it takes care of itself. You know, where that wouldn't be the case is, you know, if we had a huge number of people who just discontinued service because we have that program cost element and we wouldn't be getting that. But, you know, that didn't happen, we don't see that happening. So, you know, that was really the main point that I wanted to get across is that, you know, the cost for the contracted expenses are variable and increase or decrease with the subscription levels. So that's the main message with the COVID nineteen impacts. Now, next, I wanted to talk about our reserves. We had talked about reserves last year. We have a couple of different types of reserves that I'll talk about. The first one being rate stabilization. And the purpose of this is to cover any costs that exceed revenues. You know, all of our estimates and analysis are done on projections, they're done on the past numbers that we've seen, what our future contracts hold. And so we go through a big effort to try and predict what it's going to be. In the event that, you know, those numbers are off and our costs had exceeded revenues, then we have a rate stabilization reserve set up so that we have a place to get money to bridge that gap. It's also used for if we have any peaky changes coming up, we can use some rate stabilization reserve to kind of flatten that out and smooth it out. So those are really what the rate stabilization reserve is for. The projected solid waste budget for next year is about thirty-three point six million. And so we look at solid waste reserves for the rate stabilization. Well, you see industry standard is people are in the five to the fifteen percent range. We take a conservative approach, we set it at ten percent. So that leaves us at about a three point three six million dollar target. As we know, last year, we used some of the reserves to help some of the rates. And based on that, our estimate of what we're going to have in reserves for the next fiscal year is about one point five eight million dollars. So this is only about forty-seven percent of what our target is. But based on the changes that we've had with the contracts, with the types of processing that we're using, we're not proposing to use any of these reserves right now. You know, we want to see how everything goes. But at the same time, you know, the way to build up these reserves is through rates and increasing rates. And we're not proposing to increase any rates either to build up the reserve. So what our recommendation is to monitor this, to hold it flat right now, and then we'll see how the next year goes. Next, I want to talk about the operations and maintenance reserve. So a different type of reserve here. This is set up to cover your cash flow in and out. Obviously, you're sending bills out, you're getting money in, you're also paying for the services. So there's always money in and out, so it's to cover that and to cover all your cash flow needs. It's also set up in case of emergency. We always want to be in a position that we can pay our contractors for services no matter what happens, so service does not stop. So in the event we have some big emergency, we need to keep moving with service, we're not getting bills in or rates in, we can fund that through that emergency. Also, it's there for unforeseen landfill issues. As I mentioned, we are still required to maintain the landfill even though it's not active. And there is cost for doing that. And there's also costs that if the regulatory agencies find something or they think we need to do more work out there or do projects, this provides revenue to be able to do those projects. In terms of what O and M reserves are set up, as, you know, people can set them up as one month, six months, which would be about fifty percent. We set it up again at twenty-five percent, somewhat conservative. That puts us at about an eight point four million dollar target for a fully funded O and M reserve. We're not there yet, we're monitoring that to see really what is the right reserve amount for Santa Clara. Right now, we have about one point five million in reserve and it's about twenty percent funded. Again, we're actively monitoring that to see where we need to be. And in terms of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, there is no projects that have been identified for landfill issues. And there's no needs that we see to spend any O and M reserve. And like with the rate stabilization reserve, we're also not going to increase rates this year to help build up that reserve. You know, we're going to keep it flat, we recognize there are some increases that are taking place. So let's keep this reserve flat for next fiscal year and let's monitor it over time. So that kind of gets us through the rates, the COVID nineteen impacts. We talked about the reserves and now let's go back and take a look, okay? So if we're not increasing rates for any of the reserves, I went through what they are. Let's see how they compare up against with the countywide averages. And a few things I want to point out with comparing on the countywide average. You'll see that's the top line in blue and it's twenty twenty, twenty-one. And that's because we do not have all the information on the countywide averages from all the various cities. Santa Clara has typically been the first one going out with its rates. We do it by fiscal year, other places do it by calendar year. So we don't have the data to see what countywide average is going to be for twenty-one, twenty-two. So the countywide average is twenty twenty-one. We're going to compare it up against though what our twenty-one, twenty-two rates are for the city of Santa Clara, for the single family and the townhouse rates. A couple of things I want to point out about the comparison. One, we did remove the cleanup campaign out of it because other cities don't provide a service like that. So we wanted to have more of an apples-to-apples comparison. And the other thing, like I had mentioned earlier, is no other city offers the reduced townhouse rates. And so you'll see the townhouse rate in the last row there. You know, again, we feel it's important to charge the equitable amount. Townhouses do not get the yard trimming service, so they don't get charged for it. You know, if we didn't have a townhouse rate, you could see what would happen. That would be everybody paying the flat rate. And that would lower what you see for our single family average, that would lower that average a bit. But we do have a townhouse rate, it's a lot lower than the single family as you see. And so when you start comparing, again, our next fiscal year proposed rates compared with the current fiscal year for the countywide average, you'll see on the twenty-two gallon, thirty-two gallon, we're not far off. We know when the other cities come in with their rate increases, that gap is going to close quite a bit. And then you look at the sixty-four and ninety-six and you see, we're already on the low side, the sixty-four gallon, especially on the ninety-six gallon. Again, we're comfortable with our rates being equitable, the way they need to be, and that our customers are paying their fair share. I don't know, you know, what the other cities have done. Some of them have not done any rate analysis, so I can't speak for why their ninety-six gallon would be so much higher than their thirty or thirty-two. You know, obviously, you could speculate that, hey, did they do a rate analysis and are they all equitable? I know I've heard of some cities going through a rate analysis process and determining that, hey, their, you know, their bins were, on the commercial side, we're paying a lot more already. And so now all of a sudden, they're in a position where, well, they need rate increases, but it can't come at the commercial side. So now all the rates got to go up on the residential side. You know, we don't have that issue. I think this rate analysis showed that we've had very equitable rates over the years. And so this is for the carts. And then on the next slide, I want to show you what they are for the bins. And again, we're taking the twenty twenty-one countywide average, comparing it up against our twenty-one, twenty-two city of Santa Clara rate. A couple of things that I'll point out here is that most jurisdictions have a separate charge for organics collections. So those aren't built in there, but naturally that would bring costs up. And again, most jurisdictions are anticipating rate increases next year as well. What you'll notice here, we have our different bins, the one cubic yard bin and the first three columns, the three cubic yard bin and the next three. And then there's different collection frequencies. But you can easily see that our rates are very good when you look at comparing against twenty twenty-one countywide average. We're lower than everybody and we're very comfortable again that we're equitable. You know, you start looking at the countywide average, well, everyone's bin rate seems a little bit higher, their residential a little bit lower. I think when they start going through rate analysis for cities that haven't, you'll see some of that balancing out. But definitely, you know, those rates look good in comparison. So that finishes up with our rates, what they're projected to be. I did want to talk now about the rate assistance program. This was an item council asked us about. They wanted us to return with some different options on the rate assistance program. So right now the solid waste rate assistance program is run through, through the Silicon Valley Power Rate Assistance Program. So any customers that qualify through that program, qualify for the solid waste rate assistance program. The one thing I do want to point out is, is the big difference is that, you know, if you're living in, in multifamily apartments, condos. Everybody has their own electric meter. That's not the case on, on the garbage solid waste side, because not everybody has their own individual cart. You know, when you are living in some multifamily properties, some complexes have the bins. And then the property manager or the owner, whomever, then distributes that cost a little bit to each tenant and they pay that in their rent. And so naturally they're not a, a customer. They're not receiving a direct bill from the city. So they're not part of the, the low assistance, the low income rate assistance program. So that is one difference between the two programs I wanted to point out. The way the solid waste program works right now is that for anybody who qualifies and receives a bill within the city of Santa Clara. Mission Trail Waste Systems reduces their collection tariff by three dollars a month. So we had then in turn pass that on to the person who's qualifying for the rate assistance program. So their bill is lowered by three dollars a month. By doing so, there's no general funds subsidy. And it's also compliance with the Prop two eighteen restrictions that we need to operate under. Again, it's only available with solid waste account. So if you don't pay for the garbage service, then you're not able to qualify. So we looked at, you know, what could be the options to bolster this program. And so, you know, complying with the Prop two eighteen, you know, taking a look at the general fund, what are really the options? You can't use rate payer money to start funding these programs. You know, there's the Help Your Neighbor Fund that was talked about. And I talked to the Department of Finance to see, you know, how does that work? But that's a whole different program. That's programs really set up for an emergency type situation where someone's facing a hardship. They can't pay their bill. What the Help Your Neighbor Program does is it'll take care of that whole bill. So they won't have to pay it, but it's not a long term, you know, discount on your bill. It's not set up like that. It's not funded like that. And so significant changes would have to go on to that program in terms of council approvals, in terms of funding. To, to change it and to, you know, start applying it for other things. But again, that wasn't the intent. And so when we went back and looked at rate assistance, we came up with two options to bolster the current three dollar per month discount. Option one, we said, okay, let's increase that discount, the seven dollars a month. So that's an increase of four. And what that does is that requires about twenty thousand dollars from the general fund to make that increase. And likewise, on option two, same, same situation, we're just increasing it more to ten dollars a month. So there's an additional seven dollars that needs to be handled through the general fund. And that is just over thirty three thousand dollars. So those were the, the options that were developed in terms of rate assistance. And as I go through some of the next steps and recommendations, you'll see what, what the options are for council here tonight. So in terms of next steps, here's what they look like. We need to determine the, the plan for rate stabilization O and M reserves. Again, we're going to continue to monitor it and then see where that goes this year and then what we might need to do in the future. We talked about changes to the rate assistance program. If we're going to do anything like that. We'll need to ultimately prepare noticing for the Prop two eighteen and make sure customers get all those notices. We're planning to set up the public hearing for the end of the May regarding the increased rates. And then ultimately those rates will take effect on July first, twenty twenty one. So in terms of, you know, this rate analysis, one, we wanted to go through and just show everyone how the rates were built up. To show how we do it, that, that they're equitable. And obviously we showed what it means in terms of what the increases are required. And so again, the increases were set up to be cost recovery. We know over next year, there's about five million dollars that we need to capture money for. So the rates were set up to account for that. So the first recommendation here tonight is directing the city manager to prepare the garbage rates to meet the cost recovery. For twenty one, twenty two, and with no replenishment of the O and M and rate stabilization reserves. And then the other alternatives are related to the rate assistance program. And there's really only one that can be selected of these. And you'll see there in, in number two would be to take no action, say, let's just keep our, our rate assistance program as it is. You'll see the, the third item there. That's to direct the city manager to permanently increase the, the solid waste rate assistance program to seven dollars a month. And it also includes a budget amendment for the current fiscal year. So that way, if you want to do it, starting March twenty one through June twenty twenty one, then sixty four hundred dollars would be required from the general fund. So this would be the budget amendment to do that. And then the other and last option would be number four, or you could pick this. That would be to increase the discount to ten dollars a month. For the remainder of the current fiscal year, that would be eleven thousand, two hundred dollars from the general fund. So again, you will be selecting one of these alternatives tonight from two, three and four. So that concludes my presentation. I wanted to thank everybody for their time. And we're here for any questions, myself as well as Dave and Garth. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Mobek. Thank you for that excellent presentation. It was very, very thorough and you were right. Those numbers came out a little bit better than, than we thought they would. So thank you very much. So we're going to start with our questions or comments. Councilmember Jane. You're muted. Muted Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, sorry, my window disappeared. I couldn't find the, anyway. So I had a number of questions. On slide twenty seven, you said that you removed the cleanup campaign from the comparisons with other cities. But I understand a number of other cities have an on-demand cleanup campaign. So is their price included in that?
So, so, so there's different programs cities might have. Nobody has a cleanup campaign like the city of Santa Clara.
I get it.
Some, some might have that, you know, you, and I'm on slide twenty seven, but I don't think it was that one.
I think it was, okay. Yeah, this one. Now that's bin rates, go to carts. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, so, so it's just the, the program is, is not comparable. So like, you know, I know in some cities you can call up, let's say you have a bulky item and they will come pick that up. Some, you know, have, they define how many times that can happen, but it's just, it's not the same level of program that, that we have by any means.
I understand, but like San Jose, I believe has that on demand, right? So their prices would include that, right?
Yeah. So San Jose has it. Again, you, you call for, you know, a one item, you put it out, they will come schedule you, whether it's this week, next week, or in three weeks, tell you to put it out and they'll take it. Again, it's just not the, the intense and the, the level of, of what our program is in terms of where you can put it all out, anything and everything out in front of the street.
And then just, I know we're, we're doing organics that are now being composted. Like a lot of other cities have free compost pickup. Do we have that service?
When you say free compost pickup?
Like you just go to the compost facility, I think in Palo Alto, show your ID and you can get a certain number of cubic feet of.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, I know Dave's group had deals with composting. They run different programs. And so I'm going to refer that question to Dave Staub, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Hi, thank you, Craig. So the city doesn't currently have a program to get free compost. Although our environmental programs team is working to set up a free compost giveaway event. It wouldn't be, you know, throughout the year, it would be on an, a, a, a one-time event basis.
I see. Okay. And then I had a question. I, on slide twenty one, where you talked about the rates came in lower thirteen percent versus nineteen percent. And why is that? Because we already have these fixed contracts with all of the, the service providers. How did they come in lower?
Yeah. So when we, when we did our, our estimates back in twenty nineteen, we were taking a look at all of our projected volumes. And we're looking at, okay, what do we think tonnages are going to be coming in at, you know, all those different components? What do we think the costs are going to be? And then we were looking at, based on where we're at with negotiations, what those associated costs were going to be. So it was all built based on projections. And so, but we, that was an important part of, you know, picking and having council choose on what policies we're going to take was cost. And so everybody wanted a cost. So we had to do some estimating. And so we did that. Now that we're in, you know, the present day, we have current numbers. We can look at last year. We can look at where our costs are with the contracts that we negotiated, we have in place. It's, it's a much more accurate analysis.
Right. But so that, so this year it's thirteen percent or whatever. And then, but we, these are fifteen-year contracts. So, so if the costs, I thought the costs are basically based on cola. So then thereafter, you know, years four, five, six, seven, they would only go up, say, four percent or something, right?
Yeah. So what with these, they are, they are based on, on a price index. You, you are correct. But the first three years, because of, of some of the significant changes with changing over to new contracts. You're getting the new fleet of vehicles that you're changing the, the process for, you know, how you're dealing with materials, specifically organics. The first three years of these contracts, the increases were more than they flatten out. And so what we'll see is the first two years were going to be the, the biggest increase, what we were projecting. Third year starts to taper out. And then you're basically, you are at your, your cost of living, your, your CPI. The, we have it on, on the utility index. That's the, the rate. But yes, you are correct.
Okay. Then my last question is, not everyone in the city gets the cleanup campaign. And we're doing all these specific area plans. We just talked about Tasman East earlier. And then we have Patrick Henry. And so do apartment complexes, like we're building all these multifamilies. Are they going to be in the cleanup campaign or how do we decide who's in and who's not?
Yeah. So a lot of the new, bigger developments are not simply just because there is not adequate space to have a program like that for them. So they don't pay for it. Some of the older complexes are not in it. Some are in it. But we, we keep track of, of that. But a lot of the newer, higher density ones are not in that program.
And then will we provide a bulky pickup for those people on demand?
Yeah. So I know Dave, there is a, one of the things we talked about was a new program rolling out. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Under the new agreement with Mission Trail Waste Systems, we're in the, we're developing an on-call bulky item collection program. But it would be for a fee where Mission Trail would charge the cost for service. But residents would be able to schedule that anytime throughout the, the year through Mission Trail, but there would be a fee for it.
So that would be an on-demand with a one-time cost when you call them. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chahal.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Greg and team for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. The disposable rate, like right now, we have a contract with Newbee up to twenty four, twelve, thirty one, twelve of twenty four. And we are paying around, this year we are paying around fifty three dollar per ton. And I know to the green waste recovery, that rate is only nineteen dollar. I'm not sure this year, last year it was only nineteen or nineteen dollars per differential. So are we, can we negotiate with Newbee if we can come out of that control, that contract and save this money? Nineteen dollar per ton versus fifty three dollar per ton?
Yeah. So good question. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chahal. So with, yeah, with, with Newbee, we have two different rates, right? So we have the fifty three dollar a ton for what I'll say, the, the garbage. And then we have the, the, the clean green, the yard trimmings that are at forty four dollars a, a ton. And so two different, those are two different costs. So the forty four dollars a ton that we pay for the yard trimmings is, is super cheap right now. That's, that's far below what, what anybody else is paying. In regards to your question about what that fee would be for the garbage, to take care of that through the green waste. You mentioned that it's, it's nineteen dollars versus the fifty three. But then there is the initial processing costs associated with it. And I think that's, that's roughly somewhere in, in there as well. So the actual cost to dispose of it is closer to about forty dollars. But as we work with, with Republic, as we have the new contracts. That is a conversation that we can have with them to see if there's any opportunity there. But we do know that when we discuss with them, they're, you know, they always want to talk about the, the yard trimming side where we're getting a pretty good deal. And pretty cheap. And so they always want to bring that into the equation too. So we, we can see how that goes.
Okay. So, but I was looking at the green waste contract. I only found two columns, like hundred seventy seven for the, what do you call? Separating the garbage, basically garbage separation. And then on top of the nineteen dollar. What you're saying is that's not true. It's more than that. Like for disposal, it's not nineteen actually?
No, the, the disposal is nineteen, but then there's a, the processing cost as well. So we pay the processing costs and everything that comes in, and then you pay a disposal cost on the backend as well.
Okay. So that I, maybe I missed that is in the contract of Green Wave somewhere.
Yeah. And, and Dave and Garth, I'm representing that correctly. That's how it's set up.
Uh, Craig, this is Dave. Yes, that is correct. That's how it's, it's set up. And by the numbers you gave out, that was assuming a fifty percent diversion rate.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Right. Okay. And we already started with green waste. Do we have any feedback from them? What is our actual diversion rate is? Did we do any audit or did we get any feedback from them for first few months?
Yeah. So we do have audits and, and our three and part of their contract, we are going to be do, doing audits to see what that recovery rate is. The, those were projections that I mentioned in the presentation today, about fifty percent recovery. Those are based on some industry numbers that we've seen. But yes, we're going to be doing actual audits to see what those numbers really are.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is the yard trimming frequency. You know, in winters, we do not have much of yard trimmings, few months. And summer we have, and especially for me, I, I don't fill up my full cart, basically. So if, do we have a room to increase the frequency? Let's say we say bi-weekly versus the weekly pickup of that.
Yeah. So, so right now our, our contracts are, are weekly. And so because obviously we're servicing, you know, areas, residents where, where some people, you know, might be heavy users all year round. Some might be just more in the summer. And so really, really it would be very difficult to start saying, okay, only this house only has it once every two weeks and this one once a week. So it's, it's really tied in with, with the weekly service that we provide for everybody.
What I'm saying is, I'm not trying it like standard bi-weekly. And if some household has it like more yard, yard trimmings, they can have a second cart. And that way we standardize on the bi-week, bi-weekly and save some money of a pickup collection, basically.
Yeah. So right, right now I think people can get multiple carts if, if they choose. It, it's a weekly service. I, I don't know if our contracts allow for modifying that. I think that's something we'd, we'd have to go back and, and take a look at. Dave, I don't know if you know anymore on that, but I believe our contracts are a bit weekly.
Yeah, there's, there's setup weekly. One of the challenges with yard waste is, you know, that certainly during the fall months is the, is the heaviest time when we get lots of leaves and. is the heaviest time when we get lots of leaves and, you know, Mission Trail has to purchase enough collection vehicles to to be able to to handle all of the the high the high watermark point of of collections. So it, you know, there's a lot of sunk costs in there with 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 making sure everyone gets the weekly service. It makes it challenging to back off and reduce services in the future.
Okay.
In the slower months.
Okay, so basically, we are saying we are bound by the contract. We cannot do it.
Yeah, contract. And then just how, you know, if you're saying, okay, well, people would have to get two carts and people start storing carts. I think it'd be something we'd have to look at, but it's certainly not in our contract right now.
Okay, okay, got it. And do I have any other questions? My other comparing the rates, I found I know you we are comparing twenty twenty rates with the county versus twenty twenty-one rates for city. I see we are in the twenty gallon cart, we are twenty percent higher. And if I add up Councilmember Suds James logic that those rates might include some of their cleanup facility also. So that's a little bit higher side on twenty percent higher than the county average. That's my general comment. And my other comment is, I know last year we did discuss about the split bin versus the green waste. And we did had the split bin option for multiple years. And do we have those rates where we can compare how much how much extra are we paying for green waste recovery disposal versus if you would have accommodated a split bin?
Yeah, thank thanks for that question. So, you know, one of the things that when we did the analysis, you know, in in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, when we were looking at options to come back to council to look for policy direction and while we're negotiating. When we looked at numbers, we estimated that, you know, the split cart was was going to be roughly about, you know, fourteen percent more. That was the figure that we had. That's what we talked about with residents. That was in the survey. We communicated with them. But we never we never finalized because then we went to council, we got a decision that, okay, let's move with mixed waste processing based on all the information, based on the the public weighing in on that. So then we we stopped negotiating for the different options for the organics. And there was policy direction to go with mixed waste processing. So we never finalized negotiations on on mixed waste, I mean, on the split cart. We did have some rough numbers on where we're at. I know last year, when we came with rates for the mixed waste processing, we were asked about comparing numbers on a theoretical perspective based on where we are at during negotiations. But, you know, a lot has transpired since then. Obviously, we're we're well into our new contracts. You know, new vehicles have been purchased that don't account for for the split cart. You know, the split carts were removed. We have new carts out there that are not split cart. So in, you know, we're in a COVID environment, which, you know, that's obviously going to have some impact. So there's really no data point for right now on how we could even get to what would be if we were to change, let alone we have the contractual items which we've discussed in the past. So, you know, those, we don't have a basis for comparing right now what if we were to move to a split cart program, what that would even be. All I could really say is just go back to when we were negotiating, when we saw numbers. And what we talked about was potentially that the mixed waste processing was about fourteen percent higher than the split cart.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's it.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. First off, you do a great job. You do you run the numbers, you keep it as low as absolutely possible. I like the flexibility and the processing. I I had a question. Specifically, the townhouses are lower because they pay for their green waste over the HOA. Is that correct through their HOA?
Yeah, they don't. They don't have a green waste service, so they don't.
Okay. And that's why. Okay, so what I was wondering is the organics, is there because there's a difference between compostable and organics. So is there any way for any business or resident or anyone that wants to provide organics to a mission Mission Trail and their processing? Is that possible at all?
Dave, do you have information on on the the organics if they want to bring it to Mission Trail Waste? If that's possible?
I we we've never discussed that with them. I'm not sure that would be possible or not.
I I may ask them. But here's my other question. When we talk about the annual cleanup, many people think it's free and it's basically seventy-five dollars a year. So when, I mean, right now, we're working on the garbage situation. When would we want to have a conversation about what's? Should we keep the cleanup the way we're doing it? Or do what are our options? When would be a good time in the process to talk about that?
You mean in terms of like what?
Some of on on-demand situation, we know that we know that it is. I'm subsidizing other people dropping stuff in the city. You and I both know that. It's nothing we can completely control. Some some multifamily have opted in or out, but that doesn't mean things don't get dumped in front of their place or people put it out. So I'm just wondering, have we looked at all our our all our alternatives? I'm getting tired. Alternatives, poor tongue. When would we want to have that conversation?
Sure. And and we have not looked at anything recently. I know in the past, there was some outreach done and some studies done, and they they didn't really go anywhere. But I what I would say is, you know, when we when we come back in in May and and bring the rates for the increase of if that's something that the council desires us to say, hey, can you go back and explore and do public outreach and start looking, what are the other options? Then you could provide us direction then. And then we can we can go back and take a look at in the meantime, really, what that's going to take, what, you know, if we're going to need to help with consultant help in terms of outreach and things like that. It's something we'll start looking at. And then, you know, if council wants to make that direction.
It would be me. I appreciate that because I recognize if we are going to change, that would be several years out. I completely understand. And I want to make certain when you talk about the assistance. So you're piggybacking with Silicon Valley Power over those people that need help. And the help your neighbor is a separate, you know, that's a separate situation, but that's for people in crisis, correct?
Yeah, when when I talked with with finance, that is more of like a one-time, oh, I just had a hardship, I can't pay my bill. And then, you know, your whole bill will be covered, which is obviously quite a bit different than the rate assistance.
Than the rate assistance.
Small piece.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker.
Sorry, the I lost the mute. Anyways, thank you. So a lot of what Raj, Karen and Suds were asking, I mean, they kind of stole my thunder there. So I'm glad they asked a lot of those questions. And then I won't rehash a lot of that. But, you know, going back to the spring cleanup, yeah, it's it's quite popular. The city of San Jose finds it quite popular, too. And I see them often coming to drop off of here. I I know for experience that Councilmember Jane, myself, Harbir Batia, Councilmember Park, we were all on a bike ride on the on the creek trail. And while we were going through the north side on Agnew, we saw a bunch of people coming with giant trucks dumping stuff onto the side of the road. And, you know, Suds, as you know, brave as he was, said, hey, stop doing that. So I'm glad he said something. I'm glad we have people, you know, keeping an eye out for that. But at the same time, you know, I kind of like what, you know, we got to keep the spring cleanup. That's period. But I kind of like what Councilmember Hardy is saying, which is a on-demand as well could be a possibility, especially if you already pay that seventy-five dollars. Do you want to do an on-demand service? I know certain other cities do strategic months that they plan for strategic regions of the city. That could be explored, but I want the public input first. And I like how you said, I think it was that you would talk about going forward on a public input would be probably pretty good, too. Knowing that everyone covered everything else, I'm not going to rehash that stuff because of time. Looking at the rate assistance recommendations and alternatives. I personally like the number three, sorry, number four, because, you know, ten dollars goes a long way. Right now, you know, I just did my taxes the other day, and I realized they made a mistake at work on my taxes. Thirty-seven dollars I got to pay to the feds. That's like a tank of gas. So I see, you know, little things like this, ten dollars goes a long way. And for a lot of people I know renters, especially in my neighborhood, ten dollars goes a long way. So I preference is number four. But at the same time, I can also settle with number three. Because seven dollars, I mean, that buys you some top ramen. I mean, come on. That buys you, I think, a value meal in any of the many restaurants or sorry, fast food restaurants around here, which I hope people shop at small businesses instead. But I understand when you're budgeting on food and seven dollars and ten dollars goes a long way, especially if you're a renter. So those are just my perspectives. I really prefer number four, but I would also go for number three as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wantnabi.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Craig, for the presentation. Good to see that the rates you're able to work with the rates and keep them down there. So I know that'll keep residents happy. I had I just had two questions. Well, actually, one's a comment, but one question I have regards the on-call bulky collection system that Dave mentioned. Is that program already in place? Or are is there going to be a rollout of it? I can't. I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, I believe we're still working on the rollout. Dave, you want to jump in there on this one?
Sure. My understanding is we've had one collection. Our environmental program staff has been working with Mission Trail and content been in contact with homeowners associations to see what the what they will permit in terms of and letting Mission Trail come on to private property to to make collections. So we're we're working with them to to put together, you know, finalize program parameters. And then we're going to roll it out hopefully later this spring.
Great.
To publicize it.
Okay, have you reached out to Rivermark yet?
I I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Um, let me see. Thank you for that, Dave. And then my other, oh, I just wanted to just make a comment about the cleanup campaign. I it is a very popular program in the city. And I know when COVID hit and the whole plan for the program was, you know, pushed back a bit so that, you know, a proper program could be put in place to protect everybody. I mean, the residents were just constantly asking on Nextdoor, you know, Facebook, when when is the cleanup campaign going to be? So it was wonderful when it rolled out in August and and kept everybody happy. When is it going to be again this year now? Is it going to be the same?
We're set up for May. So this year, we're able to get it done on the the regular timeframe. So. But yes, when when it got delayed last year, we definitely heard loud and clear from the residents.
Well, I I think if there were any major changes, there we would that we would see pitchforks. So I I just know that it's that popular program, even though I cannot take advantage of it in Rivermark, we don't have access to it. But but it's good to know. I thank you for working on other programs like the bulky collection program so that other, you know, developments can have have a way of getting rid of things that they don't need. And I know the city has also two other programs during the year, you know, where people can bring their items and, you know, make appointments and drop them off. And that's a wonderful benefit to have as well. Doesn't cost anything. So I mean, there's all kinds of plans to fit, you know, where, you know, where people live. So it's nice that the city offers that. So thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Park.
Yes, thank you very much for that presentation. I actually felt that the numbers that you presented and the information that you presented was very, very good for the amount of material that was there. I think that you explained a lot of the issues, you know, very concisely. At the same time, I have to say the presentation was garbage. I I do want to ask, you said that we had to maintain landfill landfill even if we are not using it. And the question is, what kind of projects have we had to fund? And how do we limit our exposure on maintaining a landfill that we're not using? Because I could see over time, lots of things happening that would require use. And then the other thing is about the questions. I think that Councilmember Hardy brought up some good issues, as as did Councilmember Jane, which is the cleanup campaign. I know that we went to visit areas that I don't think were were covered with under the cleanup campaign, but we had people dumping there and not even from our city. And I don't know what actually happened with that garbage. I also know that the cleanup campaign, we have a lot of people putting stuff out after the pickup has been done. I, you know, I see occasional pockets of stuff that's up on our streets because people missed it, or maybe people came by afterwards and drops up, drop stuff off. And from the residence perspective, it's very convenient. I don't have to go anywhere, things that are very heavy or bulky. I don't have to call anyone. I just put it out on the curb. But at the same time, trash that's put out clean at night or during the day is a mess by, you know, by the same time, twenty-four hours later because of people going through. I would hope that people who are getting rid of usable items or working items would, you know, prefer to donate those things to to things like Salvation Army and Goodwill. But again, you know, a lot of people use the cleanup campaign to to find materials like wood that that they would otherwise have to pay for. But have we looked at, I want to, you know, look at other alternatives for how we can reduce the cost of the cleanup campaign? Meaning, there is this thing about you can call for pickups, specific pickups. But maybe we could look at mini dumps, for example, or consolidated dumping areas where people could just drop off, you know, garbage at specific sites. And then the pickup at those sites would simply be when there was enough garbage to warrant a truck going through. But either way, it would be for the entire city. And maybe we could add a cleanup campaign cost to every resident and lower the cost in general, lower the cost for the people that are currently paying cleanup campaign costs, increase the garbage costs a little bit for people who aren't paying those costs, but provide them the cleanup cost service, service, the cleanup campaign service at the same time. And I think this would also do away with the need for special pickup times such as Christmas tree pickups. Like I remember, I think, well into January, we had Christmas trees on the corner on one of the neighborhoods here. Because I don't know if they missed the pickup. Or if they all right, running away from my daughter. Or if they had, they just missed the the Christmas tree pickup or there it wasn't done for some reason. But I feel like we could look at a lot of different options for providing a more convenient service. I shouldn't say more convenient, you know, different type of service that saves our saves us money and covers the entire city and provides a way to keep the city clean, even if people miss cleanup campaign weeks or days. Thank once again, thank you very much.
Councilmember Jane, you have additional comments?
I can respond to some of the comments there by Councilmember Park. Thanks for the questions. I think, yeah, in terms of limiting the exposure on the landfill, we'd love to do that. Unfortunately, I don't think there's there's any way short of removing all the garbage out there and tracking it out to to really limiting our exposure. So, you know, I think the landfill and it's closed and it's capped. But like I mentioned, there's it's under regulatory oversight, so they inspect it regularly. You know, things that have to be done is there's a cap layer that has to to be over it. If that gets, you know, you know, modified or they see it wearing down, they make us repair that. There's gas collection systems. So there's a different number of things that we need to stay on top of and fix. Stay on top of and fix, but in terms of, you know, really limiting exposure and getting rid of it, unfortunately, I mean, that's just, that's a huge, huge. Undertaking to do something like that, so. We meet regularly, we do the little touch-ups as needed, we haven't had any major things go on and obviously the related project will be building over. Some of that as well, but then we'll still be required for compliance and to monitor that, that stuff as well. So that, that's in response to the landfill and then, yes, in terms of, you know, the cleanup campaign, some of the items you mentioned, we do see some of those things. And, you know, if, if there are some things that, that get left out afterwards, we do have a roving crew that will have to send over to, to certain areas. You know, some areas historically get a lot more things dumped than others, and, and so just over the years, we, we know which ones to monitor, but certainly the issues. That you raised do happen, and I think some of the ideas and concepts you have for, you know, what else might there be for a cleanup campaign? Are things that if we do move forward with, you know, with looking at all those different options, certainly those are, those are all options, I mean, I, I think anything's really on the table to take a look at to see. You know, what can we provide, what, what those costs would be, and then like I mentioned, just having the, the community engagement component of it.
Understood, and I see that Councilmember Jane's hand is up and maybe he's going to volunteer his house as one of the mini dump sites, that's. Just, just thinking, thank you.
I was gonna offer a dump site, we actually have a transfer station on Memorex. And so we've dropped off mattresses over there and things, so that's very convenient for our residents, it's available for anyone in the city. So I recommend that people look into that. And in terms of the, the landfill ongoing costs. Will the related project improve the caps? Over that landfill to collect more methane and keep more methane from leaking into the air? What is, what is the relationship between the, the ongoing maintenance and the related project?
Yeah, so the related project, of course, they're going to be building over a, a big portion of that landfill, so there's inevitably going to be a, a big concrete. I'll say cap, if you will, the mat that goes over that landfill, and then they're going to build up from that. Certainly, you know, we've had to work with the regulatory agencies. A great deal to get their approval in terms of what we're going to do, and then the construction methods that we're going to use to build that gap, that cap, to build the structures. And so, you know, obviously that will, will cover it all, but there'll still be monitoring, there's gas monitoring that, that goes on. So we'll, we'll still be doing that over time to make sure there, there's no issues, but that, that will be kind of what the plan is going to be, so a portion of that's going to have a big concrete cap over it.
So that will reduce our costs, is that correct?
Well, it would reduce, you know, I'd say if there is cost, so we know that we'll never have to go into those areas and, you know, put more dirt and, and maintain the dirt because the concrete's over it. But, you know, I, I don't know, we'll, we'll have to get into it and see how it goes in terms of how we monitor if any, any issues arise. Ideally, that will limit the, you know, the, the, that type of maintenance that we've done in the past, because obviously you have a concrete cap there, you certainly can't go in there and touch it. And then it's just a collection, then it's just a, a factor of, okay, how is your, your monitoring going and, and then are there any issues? So that's, that's kind of how we, we see it and how that will roll out, but certainly the dirt will now be covered with concrete, so.
Okay, thank you, Ruth Chikata, you have your hand up?
I just wanted to add just a little bit more to that about the related development. What will happen is that the, because the development is planning to build over the, the greater part of the landfill, that they're going to be rebuilding the gas collection system. And, and putting in a, a new monitoring systems for, for the buildings that are there. So we would anticipate that we'll get a, a, a brand new system out there that'll be up to, more up to date. And that they will be responsible for, for some of that. Some of those systems, like I said, so in, in the buildings themselves related, we'll be responsible for that, we'll continue to monitor what's happening from the, from the landfill up. But we'll have, at least we'll have an updated technology in order to do that. And with us, as Director Mobek was saying, there's going to be a concrete cap on a lot of that, so we would anticipate that. The types of things that we saw, that we have to maintain now, like the settlements and, and making sure that there's not ponding out there. You know, those, those costs we anticipate to, to decrease, there will be other costs because it's, it's a little more complicated to monitor. But we'll have the advantage of, of new systems out there to be able to do that.
Thank you, and I think it might be very beneficial, especially to the new council members, to have. Some kind of session when we have time on. On that whole process of the development of the landfill, because it's, it's. It's pretty fascinating what's going to happen under there, and I think that this, the council, especially the new members, might find it very fascinating to understand what's. The transformation of what's going to happen under related Santa Clara and the landfill, so I think.
We have them scheduled already, Mayor, so I think they begin next week.
Oh, I know you're talking about. The actual development on top of landfill, are you also going to go underneath?
Touch on it, yes, absolutely.
I think it's, it's important to understand that, too. Okay, I'm going to go to the public now, is there any member of the public that would like to make a comment on, on this?
I don't see any hands, Mayor, and I have no ecomments.
Okay.
We just saw a hand go up, Deb.
Number one, Lisa, I don't appreciate your hit and run comment, so please refrain from doing that. And you invaded my privacy by exposing my name too, which I also don't appreciate, so please cease and desist the crap. Okay, on this topic, there's been asked several times before, oh, and I do live in the city part-time, more than Pat Colstead did when he was still on council and you did nothing about that violation. So we'll get back to facts now. The public has been asked several, been asking several times to please participate in being able to pick up. Composting, and I'm wondering why that's never been acted upon, it's been asked for, for several years that I have been paying attention for as a resident of Santa Clara. So I'd like to know when that's finally going to be acted upon, because like I said, it's been asked several times and lots of surrounding cities do it at no cost. The organics could have been solved by, and cheaper for the public by handing every person up a thing they could compost in their backyard, and it would have been cheaper. For people to do that than the increased cost, why was that never investigated any further too? And I asked questions a couple of weeks ago, for example, about headcount for RD, for the people that have been added since RDA, and I'd like to know where I can find those documents. On those questions, I haven't seen that asked, answered. And also on the disclosure for the sewer situation, you like to bring up issues, but then you leave the public stranded. And you never did ask the other issue of, is that now disclosed to the public, especially on real estate disclosure forms? That the public is now on the hook for up to $12,000 worth of expenses that needs to be legally disclosed to any potential buyer. That was never disclosed to me, and I bet you, you're not disclosing it to your clients, which is illegal. So may I see those answers and where are those answers posted, I'd like to see the answers, and you can also email them to me if you'd like. As a taxpayer, I think everybody's entitled to these and they're very important issues for those people everywhere, thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on any of these issues?
I don't see any further hands, Mayor.
Okay, staff, there was like 20 things in that, in those comments, I don't know if there's any of them that you can even answer this evening?
Hey, Dave, is there any plans on the composting side?
We're planning to set up a compost giveaway this summer, we don't have a date determined yet and we still have to reach out. Newby Island to, to make arrangements to get the compost, it will like. It will likely be at our corp yard or in another public facility, but it would be just a, a one day only, the compost would be free to residents that want to pick it up.
So we could set that out in our utility bills or whatever we do to advertise that?
Yeah, we can advertise, yep.
Okay, good.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at, we'll look at what the options are for, for advertising, social media, we'll have to explore what the options would be, and then what, what we think is the best approach.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do some type of advertising.
Okay, is there anything else that you feel like you can answer?
The, the only other question I saw on there was about options on versus mixed waste processing, certainly we, we explored different options through that whole multi-year process. And we worked with our different providers to see what those options would be, we talked about the split cart program, there was discussion about disposing of the organics in the clean green. And so we went through that detailed analysis several years and then ultimately based on all our outreach, all the public meetings. We narrowed it down on the mixed waste processing and then that's what we moved forward with.
Okay, thank you, thank you Director Mobek, I don't see any, any other public members. I just wanted to say thank you for the report and I agree with the recommendation. That you're offering that we. Prepare the garbage rate to meet our cost recovery for fiscal year 2122. And I, I, I'm interested in the most assistance that we can give to our residents, and so I'm interested in. Number four, which is to direct the city manager to permanently, permanently increase the solid waste rate assistant discount to $10 per month and approve a budget amendment of $11,200. From the general fund to cover the enhancement from March 21 to June 21, we're still in the middle of a pandemic, and I think that that would be. You know, very, very reasonable to help people, we do that with our electric utilities, so. I, I, I very much agree with Councilmember Becker on that respect, and I see your hands up, Councilmember Becker, are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, absolutely, I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number four. The rate assistance recommendation alternative, which is direct the city manager to permanently, permanently increase the solid waste. Rate assistance discount to $10 per month and approve a budget amendment for a transfer of $11,200 from the general fund to cover. The enhancement from March 2021 to June 2021.
Staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, and was that a second, Councilmember Jane?
Yep.
Very good.
I just wanted a clarification, is it just one and four, is that what you're proposing?
It's one and four.
Yes. Yeah, I think we're done with all this trash talking.
It's funny, but yeah, okay, okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion, Assistant City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Wantnabi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shahal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, and that passes unanimously, thank you Director Mobek and Dave Staub and City Manager and Ruth and everyone involved in this, it was a. Very, very, very comprehensive report, and I think the way you broke it out was great and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, next item we have on the agenda is action on reappointment of commissioners, declaring commissioner vacancies and setting dates for recruitment. And interviews, and then there's one, two, three, four, five recommendations, so should we just take them one at a time? The first is reappoint the six eligible commissioners to serve a four-year term each ending June 30, 2025, Councilmember Becker. This is the reappointment first.
Thank you, Mayor, sorry, yeah, okay, so we are doing it individually then?
Yeah, because they're all different, so.
Okay, and I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the six eligible commissioners to serve a four-year term each ending June 30, 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on that? Any member of the public on the reappointment of the commissioners? Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a ecomment.
On this, okay, go ahead, please.
This is from Jonathan Evans, the comment reads, the records for the HLC do not seem correct, commissioners stand, standard for Leon. Are listed as ineligible for reappointment but are both on their first term after having served a previous partial term, both should be eligible for reappointment, end of comment. I do have a response to that, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So it did come to my attention that there was a typo, typo under Patricia Leong under the Historical Landmarks Commission. She was put down as no, it should have been yes, she has been serving since December 2015, was reappointed in 2019, that was a partial, her first partial term. And then from 2019 until 2023, so she will be eligible, the correction will be made on the master roster. With regard to Mr. Sandifer, he was appointed in September of 2013, it was a partial term, was reappointed in 2017. He was under the impression that he had filled two full terms, that would actually come out to. What is it, seven years and 10 months, but I did speak with him and I did search, I went to look at that council staff report and it was a partial term. But after speaking with Mr. Sandifer, he expressed that he was satisfied with the time he had served and he would be happy to provide the opportunity for someone else.
So the reappointment, is it correct at this point, it doesn't sound like Patricia Leong is up for re.
Correct, yes, the, the, all the recommendations are correct, this is just a typo that will be, that has already been corrected on the master roster.
So the names are in there correctly now?
Yes.
You have a motion and a second, Councilmember Jane, you have a comment on the motion?
I just wanted to clarify that there was a incorrect attendance record on the planning commission. I think that one of the vacancy, one of the excused absences was transferred to Lance Salem, and it should have been for Ricky Hero. And I, I did get confirmation from Rena Brio about that, so just to correct the record on that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, Assistant City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Wantnabi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shahal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, and congratulations to all those who are reappointed. Thank you for serving the city, next we have declare five vacancies on the following commissions for four full year terms. Each ending June 30, 2025 and one partial term ending June 30, 2024. And the commissions are Board of Library Trustees, Cultural Commission, Historical and Landmarks Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Senior Advisory Commission. Okay, do I have a motion to declare those vacancies?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to declare vacancies, Councilmember Becker, you have a question?
Yeah, so if I was to consider something for the third one on here, would that be considered part of number two then as well, because that would be considered?
Let's just take three when we get to three.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to, sorry.
That's okay, so we have a motion second, do we have any public comment on number two, declaring the vacancies?
I do not see any hands up and I do not have any more ecomments.
Thank you, see you, okay, so Assistant City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Wantnabi. Councilmember Wantnabi.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Shahal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes. All right, so that passes unanimously, now we go number three, direct staff on how to proceed to fill the partial, partial term. Ending June 30, 23, 23 on the planning commission, so Councilmember Becker?
So I would like to direct staff and I hope the rest of my council, council will support me on this, is I would like to open this up for a vacancy. New council, new perspective, and I would like to see more women. New council, new perspective, and I would like to see more women apply and more people of color, as well as more people of the LGBTQ plus community as well. So I would like to direct staff and make a motion to open up the partial term ending on June 30th, 2023 on the planning commission and set April 23rd, 2021 by 5:00 PM as the application deadline and set May 24th, 2021 as the date to conduct the interview.
So should we do three, four, and five together then? Do them all together?
Yes, so four and five is for the, all, all of them.
And we'll include the planning commission?
Yes, correct.
Mayor, Mayor, I have my hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that, that's okay. I just wanted to be sure. No, under the planning commission, I just want to note that when we interviewed the last group of candidates, there were several that were, I guess, held in abeyance, you know, that, that if, if something happened, that, you know, there was an opening that these candidates would be eligible to be placed, they were placed on an eligibility list to, to fill those positions or if anything became vacant. And apparently, according to the memorandum, there are two planning commission candidates that are still eligible. They're, the eligibility is, won't expire until June 30th, 2021. And I, I mean, when we interview those candidates, we did say that, you know, they were, their names would be held, you know, in case there was an opening. And at that time, you know, the clerk could reach out to them and see if they were still interested and if they could come back for a second interview. And, and I think it's only fair that, you know, people that have already applied and are on an eligibility list with that expectation, they should be given that opportunity, just like Mr. Kwan, Mr. Hong was. Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, I have to agree with Councilmember Becker. We want to have the best people on the planning commission and who knows who's going to apply if we open it up. Certainly, the two people that applied earlier, they could reapply. And if truly they are the best candidates, they will get appointed. So I don't see any reason why we shouldn't open it up.
I disagree. They were given, they were put on an eligibility list. They already applied. And frankly, I think that's an insult to state that we should open it up to see if we can get the best candidates. That what we, that, that's an insult to those people that have already been put on the eligibility list. I think they should be, have the clerk reach out to them and ask them if they're, if they would, if they're still interested. And if they're interested, have them come in and do a second interview. And if they're not inter, and if they're not interested, then reach out and, and do, ask people to apply like it is done when, when there are openings.
I think there is more than just the planning commission. I think we also have through the parks commission and do we have another commission, City Clerk? How, how many of these commissions do, we have people on the eligibility list?
Well, currently, from, that I'm aware of, is the two gentlemen that were placed on the planning commission on the eligibility list.
Thought we had parks too.
Okay, yes. Simrith is reminding me that we have on the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Salary Setting Commission.
So do we have Salary Setting Commission open?
No, they're not due at this time.
So, so the parks and the planning, that's right. I mean, we have a, a policy in place. That's what we did. And we should honor what we did. We had two members of the planning commission. I believe they're both men of color too. Two members on the planning commission and, and then one on the Parks and Recreation Commission. So it's really up to this council to decide if you want to honor what, what has already been promised them or not. Your hands up?
Yeah, no, I, I just, because the Salary Setting Commission was mentioned, I just wanted to remind the council that the, the council does not appoint to the Salary Setting.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, they apply.
It's, it's, it's pointed, it's an appointment by the Civil Service Commission.
So I think, I think the first action is because we have this policy in place, that this is what we did. Whether or not to confirm that policy, I think we should do that first. I think that's, is that the right thing to do, City Attorney, since we have the policy, we have the eligibility list? We have members on there that have been waiting?
Yeah.
From a, from a legal standpoint, it's, it's how you want to appoint is entirely up to the council and the council can amend how it did before. And, you know, this council can decide itself what's fair and what's not fair, but from a legal standpoint, there's no, there's no real legal claim to, to stick to what the previous council had decided.
Because we have that eligibility list, should we at least take a vote whether or not to?
You know, I think that's, you know, if, if that's.
Especially because we have public members that are on that.
It's the pleasure of the council to, to, to do it that way. There's, there's different ways of doing it, but that, that it is one way of doing it that seems like an orderly way of considering it that, you know.
But let's suppose.
And it's kind of explaining to the public that we're, that you're now changing the process that you previously approved.
Right. Did, so Councilmember Watanabe, why don't you make a amended motion to also include that? And then we'll see if that passes or not. Before we go to the original motion to include the, the three, I think it's three members that are on the eligibility list.
I, I believe, yes, there were three, but then I believe Mr. Mr. Hong was, he filled one of the, the, he filled a partial term.
That's correct. And he, he filled the partial term and he has expressed interest to continue to serve on the planning commission. So currently, we have two that are on the eligibility list, which the, the list will expire June of 2021.
Okay, then I would like to make an amended motion then to ask the two, a planning commission candidates back for a second interview who are placed on the eligibility list by former council action, which is due to expire on June 30th, 2021.
But also include the Parks and Recreation Commission person, who I can't remember who it is.
So Mayor, just to clarify, the, the Parks and Recreation Commission and the one I mentioned on salary, those were already appointed.
Oh, they have been appointed?
Yes, those, that was a past list that was set up and it was used already, so.
I'm not sure that's the case. So, and again, we don't appoint on salary setting anyway, so that's, we don't, that is. Are you sure Parks and Recreation?
We will confirm that for you.
Yeah, there'll be time, I guess. So there's a motion on the two planning commissioners to bring them back, the two that are on the eligibility list. To include what the other motion was to direct staff to fill the partial terms on planning, commit, to bring them all back April 23rd and to set May 24th as the date to conduct the interviews.
Yes.
Okay, so are all, all, okay, on this amended motion. Vice Mayor Shahal.
I have some comments, Madam Mayor, on the motion, on the topic itself, basically.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so what we, I think we should have a standard policy of appointments. Like we have been using flexible policy. Sometime we use that, sometime we don't use that. So that will send the right message to all the residents at the same time. Like it should not be a discretionary that, okay, one time we decide one thing, other time we decide other thing. So I would highly recommend the council that, or City Attorney, that we should finalize the policy once for our, forever. So that nobody has a role to play around with one way or the other.
We have a policy right now, Vice Mayor Shahal.
Yeah, exactly.
You all supported, so we have. So, but if you can change it, we can change it later. But yeah, I, I think we should talk about a policy before all of these appointments.
Madam Mayor.
We actually have a policy.
We do not, I don't think that policy is in the, in writing, if I'm not mistaken. We just decided, so we, we, as City Attorney was mentioning, it's up to the privilege of the council, whichever way they want.
I agree, you can change the policy, but it is in writing. We voted on it and we have it. So, yes, City Clerk.
If I may, Council, Vice Mayor Shahal is correct. It's not a policy that we have written on this. It was something the council voted to do, to, to set an eligibility list when we had brought in about, the recruitment yielded like 15 candidates on the planning commission. And the council felt that they were excellent applicants and you wanted to have them in the event that a resignation occurred. So with that, that was the motion that had been put in place.
So the, was that unanimous with four of us that are here right now? I'm just checking because those are, you know, that's action that we took.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so.
What I'm saying is let's make it as a standard policy. It should not be that.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
Take it like one time we decide something and other time we decide something. That's what.
What's on the, what's on the board right now is something that the council voted on, including you, Vice Mayor, and I, I, Councilmember Watanabe and myself.
I'm not denying that.
So.
Mayor, I'm not denying that. I'm just saying, let's standardize on it so that every resident knows that this is the policy. It's not, not to be changed.
Because we all know that when we go through these interviews and you interview, you know, 15 candidates for a, a, a commission and you find so many great candidates, that's the reason we came up with the eligibility list, because we didn't want to lose a lot of people that, that were applying. And, and it took us, I don't know, 10 hours to go through all of these candidates. That you don't want to keep doing that within a year's time span. That's the reason we came up and that's the reason why we did the eligibility list. So I'm fine setting a policy. I just want to get through this first motion to see if the council will confirm what we voted on already and what these two individuals, and I don't even know if they're still interested, but what those two individuals, what we told them we were going to do. So I, I just want to get through that and then we can, you know, determine our policy before we interview these, all of these other candidates as well. I agree with you, Vice Mayor. We, we need to have something. All right, so next we have, Councilmember Becker.
So, you know, just a point of clarification, this is just, the reason why I'm going this route, was going that route was because of new council, new vision, new ideas maybe. At the same time, I thought we were fair because we appointed Kian to the, to the role. And then I felt that now it should be a possibility that we open it up for more people to apply because like I said, there's three new council members here, three new perspectives. And maybe we don't all agree with the people before that were appointed. I would like to interview people to see if that, I agree with others and maybe I might actually have my mind turned. That's why I would like to see those people who were former candidates for this position to reapply or be able to be in that pool of new applicants. Because, you know, I think, you know, more voices, you know, I think it's more democracy and I think that should be something that we should do, but that's just my opinion, so.
That's fine. And, and even the two that, that we said were on the eligibility list, they both have to come back and re-interview, you know, for the two, for the one position for two of them. Anyway, so, all right, Councilmember Park.
Actually, I see that City Attorney Doyle has his hand up and I would like to hear what he has to say.
Councilmember Park, this is your chance to talk if you want to say something.
Okay, I guess I don't understand fully what the difference is. It sounds like the people on the eligibility list will not, would not have to apply again and they would get their chance at a second interview, but perhaps with the inclusion of any other potential new candidates. And what you're suggesting is that they get the second interview excluding any, any new candidates. Is that, is that the difference?
Yes, that's what the council voted on when we interviewed the 15 people for the planning commission. Yeah, that's what we told them. Yeah.
Understood, but, but I think the benefit of being on the eligibility list in the first place is, one, you don't have to apply again. Sorry, yeah, the application is not there. You still have to go through the interview. Is that correct?
Correct, so for the two, what we told them was the two of them, that Mr. Hong would automatically go into the position, which he did, right? You all voted for that, but, but that's what we voted on and that the two, if, if, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't put them in any order. We said if there was a second position that they would have to come back and re-interview. And we, we did that before on one of the other, I think it was a planning commission, actually, before. So they would have to come back and the two would have to re-interview.
And we would just be excluding any new candidates?
Any new candidates, right. That's, that's what we had decided back when.
Okay, thank you.
They were excellent candidates and, which I think you would see, but that, that they were. And you, you may have even watched the interviews, but, but they, because they, we had to do planning commission in public. But, but, you know, we voted on it, so I'm sure they believe. But again, I don't even know if they're interested, but, you know, that's what we told them we were going to do and we voted on it. So I think that we have to really, you know, address this before we go into something else. Okay, so City Attorney, you have your hand up?
I just wanted to kind of put, put a little bit of perspective on this. You know, I, I realize that you don't have a, a piece of paper with a number on it in your policy manual, but indeed you did enact a policy, whether it be a formal or informal policy, you did enact a policy the last time. And I, I, I do think it would be helpful for everybody concerned to, to formalize that as, as Vice Mayor Shahal has suggested. But I do think that at a minimum, you, you do currently have a policy that, that, that the previous council enacted. It's, it's just not a, not something that with a number on it in, in the policy book. You have had different ways of interviewing people. You've had different ways of, you, you do different interview processes for different commissions. And this is the one that you chose for the, the planning commission. So, and there, and there is some merit to what you represent to the public as how you're going to go about your business. So I do think it would be appropriate to vote first on whether or not you want to continue to follow this policy by, by adopting the motion. And then if, if that fails, then, then you're just telling the, the public that you're now going to change the policy to do something else. And that's fine. You're, you're totally allowed to do that. And I, I just think it's, it would just be helpful for all concerned, including myself, the clerk, the council, the people that are candidates, to, to really have a, a consistent policy that, that you're going to follow just to reduce the wear and tear and disappointment and expectations. So I would encourage you, no matter how this motion turns out, to create a policy that everyone agrees with and understands and then, and then to stick with it because it really isn't a good idea to keep changing the policy every time. Just do it, council members.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, Mayor, that we refer it back to the Governance Committee, refer the policy to the Governance Committee for exploring or, or adoption and making it a, a permanent policy.
Okay, that would be fine too, because our interviews are May 24th, so we should come to some decision before May 24th, because that's a lot of appointments, you know, that we'll be facing. So, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I see we have a member of the public that would like to speak. Deb, go ahead.
I don't believe you asked the maker of the motion if they agreed to an amendment. And who are the two people that are on the standby list that Councilmember Watanabe is so concerned about? And if the rest of the council doesn't agree with these two people, wouldn't it be better to have another group of people available to choose from rather than delay the process longer? If those two are rejected by the majority of the council, I think you're better off opening it up to everyone instead of playing cronyism and favoritism again. If there's no written policy, a way of, an operating procedure does not establish something that's binding legally at all. So the council's not bound by what a previous council did. So, the council's not bound by what a previous council did. Um, just like you're trying to undo the contracts that, uh, you Lisa were part of agreeing to, now you want to rewrite history about. So I think that this council's not bound by that. Maybe it's a, an operating procedure, but it's definitely not binding at all. So, who are the two people that you're wanting to protect so badly? And, uh, I would strongly recommend that you ask the maker of the motion if they even agreed to an amendment, cause I don't remember you asking that. And that is, uh, Robert Rules of Order. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Park, do you have a comment?
I do. I, I was actually gonna bring up a little bit of what Deb said, which it sounds to me like, uh, anyone applies and they pass the first round of interviews and they're on eligibility list. The benefit would be they don't have to apply again and go to the first round of interviews. Uh, and would simply join a, a new pool of candidates who also passed the first round of interviews. Uh, that would simultaneously, um, in, you know, keep the eligible, eligibility list uh, live. Like that would always keep a new candidates in the eligibility list and still give people who applied earlier an advantage. Uh, and I think that that is a fair way to do it. Uh, which gives an advantage for people applying early. Because again, I think that all candidates that, that are able to go through the first round of interviews uh, should be considered. Uh, in this case, the people who have already passed the first round of interviews, I think that we should give them the benefit of the doubt and pass them through the second round of interviews, um, with any other candidates who also passed the first round and will also make it on the eligibility list if they are not selected this time around. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you completely thousand percent lost me. So I think we have a motion on the floor which is to bring back the two candidates that are on our eligibility list for the planning commission. And I just want to reiterate that four of us were there at the time when we voted for these two candidates. I can't even, I don't know their names. I don't remember.
Neither, yeah.
But.
The two candidates were Yash Raj Batnagar and Ali Zaragari.
I'm sorry, Nora, can you please repeat that?
The two candidates on the list are Yash Raj Batnagar and Ali Zaragari.
Okay, those are our two candidates that we, and they were very impressive. I know that. I just couldn't remember their names. So, uh, so that's the first motion is to bring them back to interview them for the planning commission just exclusively is that's our last policy, so. Assistant City Clerk. We vote on this before we go to, uh, Councilmember Becker's motion.
Okay, so was there a second to this?
I seconded it.
Oh, okay. Just a moment. And Maker to the amended motion, did you add in there the, to set the April twenty-third date as the application deadline as well as set May twenty-fourth as the interview date?
Yes.
Okay. Here we go. Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shahal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
No.
Councilmember Jane?
No.
Councilmember Becker?
No.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Okay, so I think that passes four to three. All right, so next we, um, move to Councilmember Becker's motion. Uh, to bring back all the rest of them, April twenty-third and, uh, for the interview and set May fourth to conduct interviews. Application deadline, I'm sorry, April twenty-third and May twenty-fourth to conduct interviews.
So this is to include the planning commission in the annual recruitment?
For those two, for those two candidates, yeah.
Okay.
Could we also include that we also set up, that we, um, discuss and set up a policy before we, could that be part of our discussion sometime between now and May twenty-fourth or happening on May twenty-fourth?
So, Madam Mayor, the, um, eligibility list, um, has gone to governance and it's in the pending policy that is to come back to council. Um, we just have not come back yet.
Is it the end of this month? Will we have a recommendation from governance and ethics before May twenty-fourth? We want to make, we have a discussion on that before then.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that that happens. We'll get that going.
Okay. So, um, uh, Councilmember Becker, you have, uh, your hand up?
Yeah, uh, sorry, um, so just to make sure to clarify, this motion was my original motion to open up interviewing, uh, uh, application process to also include the other two candidates, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Well, the other two candidates are just for the planning commission.
Wait, sorry, so my motion was to, my original motion was to for the planning commission to open up the process to inter- to recruit, to interview as well as the other two candidates.
No. No. We just voted to include those, just those two candidates.
Okay, well then, my motion doesn't make sense then because my original motion was to open up the application process to interview, to actually interview, uh, open up the application process, have a deadline on the twenty-third of April and then also interview them on the twenty-fourth with the original two candidates.
We, we amended the, the planning commission part of that.
So basically my emotion then doesn't exist then.
Your motion is for all the other, all of the other, um, commissions.
Okay, then that's.
All those commissions.
Fine.
Okay. Um, uh, Vice Mayor Shahal?
Uh, I think I needed that clarification, whether this motion is including planning commission or, or everybody other than the planning commission we already first.
Everybody other than the planning commission.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, let me clarify. Um, it was to direct staff to how we were going to proceed to fill the disposition on the planning commission. Um, what Councilmember Becker had, uh, motioned was to include the planning commission in the annual recruitment. Is that correct?
Uh, we amended that.
Correct, so we already, um, talked about the declaring the vacancy on the other commissions that need to be in the recruitment?
Right, but we didn't set April twenty-third for the deadline for the application and May twenty-fourth for the interviews.
Oh, that was on, in Councilmember Watanabe's?
That was only for.
Okay, so hers was just for the two. Okay, gotcha.
You'll have Board of Library Trustees, Cultural Commission, Historical Landmarks Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission and Senior Advisory Commission. We have all those commissions.
Okay. Uh, who was the second on this motion?
I can't remember.
I was.
Uh, Councilmember Jane.
Excuse me. Would you like me to do the roll call?
Yes, please. Oh, uh, City Attorney, your hand is up.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd just like to make a suggestion that in case the two people that are still on the eligibility list do not want to come forward and, and interview.
Then we open.
Then, then, then this motion should also include an opening for the planning commission, so we don't have to come back and, and, and.
Very good. Thank you. That's a really good suggestion. Uh, Maker of the motion, will you include that in your motion? We don't know if they're even still interested.
I'll include that.
Okay, thank you.
I accept too.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion in a second on that. Uh, we have member of the public, Deb, go ahead.
You just took these completely out of order. Becker's motion was up first. You never asked him if he wanted an amendment. You needed to vote on his first. So you got this completely screwed up. I mean, I, I don't understand what you're doing and you don't know what you're doing. He had a motion on the floor that was seconded. Her motion was out of order. There was nothing, she, there was never asked to be amended. Even your own city clerk doesn't know what you're doing because you just did it wrong. So you need to take Becker's motion first. It was never properly amended. What in the hell is going on? It's not that late. Becker had a motion on the floor to include everything, including the, the, uh, planning commission. That needs to be taken first. And it was seconded. M- Watanabe's thing is superfluous. You can take that if, if Becker's fails. Please do it properly. Thank you. Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Um, any other public comment on this? Okay, Assistant City Clerk, go ahead. Roll call.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Madam Mayor, can, can City Attorney, uh, throw a light on that, whether that was procedural or not procedural, please?
City Attorney?
Yeah, I mean technically speaking, it was in, it, it was an amendment to a, um, a pending motion. And so you should have really voted on it twice. First to amend it and then to vote on the, the amended motion. So if you'd like to go back and do that, you can do that, or I think that's kind of what everyone was thinking when they did that, but, um.
So we vote on the same amendment twice?
No, if you recall yesterday, several times we had, uh, a situation where it was not a friendly am- amendment and, and this was not a friendly amendment.
Right.
So, um, so what Council, Councilmember Watanabe did was, um, made, made a motion to amend. Councilmember Becker. But so you should have made a motion to amend the motion first and then voted on the motion. The amended motion.
So basically what we did was not right?
I, it was, it was a shortcut of an, an extra step.
Okay.
So, um, if you, if you would like, you can now treat, treat what you just did because, um, uh, you could treat what you just did as an amendment. Not a friendly amendment, but a, an amendment to his motion. And now you can vote on the amended motion. But I think everyone assumed that you'd vote, all vote the same way since you, since you had four, four votes to amend the motion, but technically speaking, if you want to stick strictly to Robert's rules of order, you can do that.
Oh gee, okay, so let's go back to Councilmember Watanabe's motion to amend. Uh, to add the two planning commissioners that were on the eligibility list from this last year.
Yeah.
Yes. Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes, that's the motion to add the two people that were on the eligibility list that is set to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
That's the same motion you made before, so.
I know.
Is this, we're making it again? I don't get it.
No, I think, I think, I think the best way to do it now is to treat what Councilmember Ma- Watanabe did as amending the motion. And now you have an amended motion on the floor and now you can vote on that.
So, uh, just repeat what she did before.
Yeah, let, let me restate the amended motion.
Okay.
The amended motion is to, instead of, instead of, uh, Councilmember Becker's motion, the motion is to basically um, just interview these, just interview these two people and have them come back for the, you know, indicate their interest in coming by that date and come back on the date that you said. I don't remember what the date was, but whatever in that, what, what was ever in the motion. So that's, that is now the motion on the floor. And it is an amended motion of Councilmember Becker's original motion.
Which is the same motion that Councilmember Watanabe made, so we're just repeating that.
I, I, I understand that, but because you could not get a friendly am- a friendly amendment to a, a, a motion that had been seconded, that's the way you have to do it. You have to vote twice. First, you have to vote to amend the motion and then you have to vote on the amended motion. That's what you did last night, if, if you recall.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what we were doing just now, voting on the amended motion with Councilmember Becker's motion.
But you didn't have two votes. You needed two votes first.
Okay, that's not what we did last night, but okay, so. Councilmember Watanabe, um, we're, you're making the motion, City Attorney's motion?
Yes.
Amended motion.
The amended, yes.
Okay. And I seconded that.
Right.
Now, uh, Vice Mayor Shahal?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I will support the motion because we already committed to these people, but going forward, I like, we should not be having a, uh, flexible policy that we pick and choose a policy. So only even I'm voting for this thing is because we already have committed to these people and, uh, that's the only reason I'll be voting for that. Thank you.
Same here. I agree. We committed to them. Councilmember Park?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I think what the City Attorney is saying is first, we have to vote to see if we want to change the motion. And then once we've voted to change the motion, if that passes, then we can vote to pass the motion. And that's the, that's the difference.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, Assistant City Clerk on this amended motion.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shahal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
No.
Councilmember Jane?
No.
Councilmember Becker?
No, we have no clue what's going on.
And Mayor Gilmore?
I vote yes. So that passes again for the second time, four to three. Okay, now, now here we go, City Attorney. What next? Besides the council?
Well, now we have not acted on the, the, the other alternatives, so.
The other. Which was Councilmember Becker's motion? For the other alternatives for all the, all the other boards and commissions?
All right, so now Councilmember Becker can, just as he stated it before, be, when we, we, he had, he had the motion, we, we went back and, and fixed the previous motion. So now we're on his motion again. So, Councilmember Becker, why don't you restate your motion? Um, I think we had a friendly amendment to, to include my suggestion, which was uh, also include the planning commission in terms of the dates for eligibility. And, um, the interview, in case the two people that you just said were eligible decide that they're not going to come forward.
So I'm sorry, so I'm gonna have to basically change my motion then because my original motion was for just the planning commission to have an open application process. So basically I'm gonna have to go back and change this motion because that wasn't my original motion to go for all these other committees. It was just the planning commission.
Uh, no, your original motion got amended, so your original motion is no longer around.
That, that's, that's where I'm really confused because this is the first time I've ever kind of seen this in government displays where, uh, someone makes a motion, they have a second on the motion. They want to take a vote on that motion and then somebody else makes the amendment. I've never seen, I, 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 maybe I'm just, it's new to me in this, but I've never seen this happen before on our city council meetings. So, especially before when I was, when I wasn't on the council. So that's just kind of confusing because it's something that I didn't agree to or didn't second, or I didn't say, oh sure, I'll take that friendly amendment, so now. But anyways, I just want to make sure that I'm doing the right thing by saying, okay, for the rest of those, I just want to make sure I don't have to go back and reword this because of, I was only focused on planning commission before.
Let's just, let's just do this, so. Um, there's a difference between a friendly emotion, a friendly motion, a friendly amendment, excuse me, and, and, and a, and a, and amended motion, an amendment to a, a, a standing motion. So you're, you made a motion, Councilmember Watanabe made a motion to amend your motion. And so basically her motion became actually a substitute motion. And so you, you vote on whether or not to amend your motion first. And the council ended up amending your motion first. And then, so, so your amended motion, you voted against amending the motion, so, so you no longer have a motion. And so now you can make a new motion about what, what else is left.
Okay.
So I thought you were in the process of making it a final motion to, to close out this pro- this item. There were other commissions besides the planning commission that still needed to set a date and have an interview process date.
Okay.
So for application date and interview date. And you were, I thought you were in the process of doing that. And then I said, then I came up with the suggestion, well, if those two people don't show up, we want to make sure that we also open that process up to the planning commission because otherwise we won't have the pool to appoint to the planning commission. So that's, that's what, that's what I think your motion at this point should be. If we'd like to close out this agenda item.
Yeah, that, that'll be my motion. Just as a point of clarification, I remember just a couple of weeks ago, I was going to, and I'll go back and watch the video again if I have to. I, I remember there was a motion on the floor. I was gonna try to do something similar and make an amendment like that. And I think I had that support and then we ended up just voting on the first emotion anyways. And I said, so I just hoping we're gonna keep with this practice because I just want to make sure we're doing the right things. But I will do this motion and I will take your, your, sorry, it's getting really, I'll take your advice.
My suggestion.
To include that.
And I will second that.
You, city, city clerk, do you have that? I feel like this is exactly what we just did a few minutes ago, but okay.
I think we were there pretty close. We were getting there.
And we did this about eight times yesterday. So, city clerk, do you have the, the new motion?
Yes. Are we ready for roll call?
Yes. Oh.
I have my hand up.
Councilmember Park, we did get the advice from the city attorney, so.
Oh, and I, and I heard that and I believe that he is actually mistaken there, which is the, the vote that we took, that we need to have two votes. The first vote is to amend the motion on, on the, on the table. And that's the vote I think we took. The first vote that we took, I think, was invalidated because we did not follow the correct process.
Well, we are now.
In validating the first process would, would hesitate two votes and we did not take two votes yet. The first vote would be to amend the motion on the table. And then once we decided that we would like to amend that, then we have to, we have to vote on the amended motion to put it into action. And if we actually amended Councilmember Becker's motion, then all the things that were in Councilmember Becker's motion should be in the amended motion. And I believe that Councilmember Watanabe should have stated it's Councilmember Becker's motion with this change. And the change is we will not take any new candidates for planning commission. We are going to take the candidates on the eligibility list exclusively. And to make a city attorney's suggestion, you know, to bring, bring that into it. And the second part, there would be another amendment that would say, and to open up the interview process for new candidates to be put on the eligibility list. And I think that if we had done this correctly, we wouldn't need a second motion. And I, I would think that Councilmember Becker's motion has already been voted on because it was the, it was Becker's motion with the amendment by Watanabe.
Thank you, but we have a motion and a second on the floor that it's been.
Okay, but we have not actioned, we have not actioned the original amended motion.
Okay, but this has been blessed by the city attorney, so I feel very comfortable in moving ahead on this motion. Councilmember Becker?
I'm ready to take the vote, but I think this is the plot for inception.
What?
I'm only laughing because I'm tired, okay? Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Watanabe? Yes. Vice Mayor Shaw Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
No.
Councilmember Jane?
No.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Gilmore?
Yes.
And that passes five to two. Thank you. All right, next item, our last item on this agenda. We have action on a written petition submitted by Councilmember Becker requesting a consideration on adjusting the start times for council stadium authority and closed session meetings. So Councilmember Becker, are you asking for this to be on a future agenda?
Yes, I am. I'm asking for it to be on a future agenda, please.
I, I would like to support that and I would like to actually work with you to come up with some ideas for how we're going to manage meetings. Maybe looking at Robert's Rules of Order and other things because I'm just, I'm just using yesterday's meeting as an example. Between yesterday's meeting and us finishing yesterday's meeting, it was a 12-hour meeting. For just from yesterday, before we got into today's meeting, right? So we had eight hours yesterday and four hours today. So if you're looking at adjusting times till later, which we'll talk about when hopefully it gets on the agenda, we need to, we can't start a meeting at seven and go for, for 12 hours, you know?
And, yeah, I, I, I would hope maybe, because I don't want to violate Brown Act, I would hope that other council members that might have concerns with their schedules do some input too. The only reason why I'm also bringing this up is because, you know, I, I see things are opening up, things are getting better. You know, I don't know when we will be back in council chambers. And I'm hoping that all of us will probably will because we all miss each other. But at the same time, I'm seeing that we're going to have to start adapting to these changes, especially if a lot of us are back in the office and then we go back to council chambers, that it's going to be really hard for, for myself and maybe even others to get to council chambers in 30 minutes from work. And I noticed that when I was on the planning commission, I mean, ask the Councilmember Jane, I mean, you saw me running into that, that council chambers, you know, trying to gas for air. So I, I'm just doing it out of consideration for, you know, my, my fellow colleagues and also for our residents who may not be able to tune in just at 3:30 or four o'clock. Just, I just like to have this entertained.
Thank you. Let, let's discuss it when it gets on the agenda. So would you like to make a motion to refer it to a future agenda? And then?
I'd like to make a motion to hear this on a future agenda.
I'll second that. Okay. Motion second, and I think Councilmember Becker said anybody that wants to give input, maybe can give it to city staff and then you can get it somehow. And then let us know. And then I'd like to work out because we, again, if we're gonna start later, which is fine, we can't have 12-hour meetings. We have to be a much more efficient and much more disciplined as we go forward. City Attorney?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, there's no Brown Act problem if, if everyone just wants to submit their work schedules to, you know,
Okay.
somebody on city staff and then get those to you and, you and Councilmember Becker. That's, that's perfectly fine. It's not a, it's not a Brown Act problem.
Very good. Thank you.
I would ask if you could send the information to Nadine. She will assemble it and then we can put a report together.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds great. All right, any discussion?
May I add additional comment? I will bring back the labor issues with respect to the, the late night meetings, especially the consecutive.
I can't, yeah, I mean, there's no way, like, it's 10:50, now we started at four o'clock and yesterday, we can't keep up this pace. For those of us that work, because remember, these are part-time jobs, right? Those of us that have jobs, it's, it's, it's gonna be especially, I think, Councilmember Becker made a, made a good point. When you actually have to physically come down here to city hall and then you're going to all your meetings, it's a whole nother dynamic. Right now, our public is able to, you know, zoom in. We normally have closed session ahead of time, so we're starting like 5:30, 6:00 anyway. But, but we have to be, you know, aware of all the issues involved and, and again, be much more disciplined in the meeting. We can't, you know, talk 10 times on an item and, and that. I mean, we're gonna have to limit ourselves if that's what we're gonna do. So I'm, you know, in favor of, of all that. It's just that, you know, if, if everyone can get their work schedules too, I think that's, that's really great. And then, you know, we can accommodate, you know, the public because they, they don't want to be up at, you know, one o'clock and two and three in the morning either. Anyways, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Member of the public, Deb, go ahead.
When you start discussing timing, could you remember that not only the city staff, but the council is there to meet the needs of the public? And having the public get started at 3:30 or four is really unreasonable. And I don't know when it got changed to this too early of an hour. And the whole issue of staffing and timing and all that crap. Jennifer used to be able to do it. Julio used to be able to do it. Everybody else used to be able to do it. And we just need to suck it up and do it. You work for the people of Santa Clara. And that's part of the responsibility of working for them is to work for them and attend their public meetings and do their public business in public. So I don't know why it continues to be such an issue that that has to come up all the time. There's enough people being paid huge salaries and getting humongous retirements that no one qualifies for in the private sector anymore. That, you know, that's part of the Bennys and you have to pay the price of the benefit. So it needs to start later. I understand that goes late. I'm up just as late as you are watching this clown car circus. Like tonight, when things still weren't done properly, because you never asked for the maker of the amendment, if you wanted to have an amendment, maker of the motion, if you wanted to have amendment. You were so anxious to kiss up to Kathy, you forgot to ask the maker of the amendment.
Excuse me.
Go back and look at the tape. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we do work for the people of Santa Clara. Kevin, Councilmember Park, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I've had a number of residents ask me, because I've asked a lot of residents, you know, could you come to the meeting? If you care about this issue, you could attend this meeting. And they've told me, well, I can't attend a, a meeting in, you know, basically near the end of my workday because I have to work. I, I can't be on a meeting. As for me, I know what I signed up for. I've been to almost every single, single city council meeting from 2009 to 2014, as well as the planning commission meetings. I keep telling people I've, I've probably spent more time at planning commission and city council meetings on my own time than anyone I know. That said, I can do this all week, but I don't think we should have to. My big complaint came last week when I had a scheduled appointment for my daughter, which would, would have been fine with the schedule that was originally set for the meeting. And then that meeting was moved up. And that was a change. And when I said I can't make that, that change, I was the only one that said I could not make that change. And basically what I was told is, well, we all have to work. Like, why didn't you say something? I did say something. And I realized, oh, if we are not going to be amenable to people's schedules and we're not going to be amenable to people's complaints about the schedules, then I can't play the game of, of taking meetings during not just work hours. Work hours, I, I can try to work around my work hours, but I can't work around my family's appointments, especially when those appointments have to occur during the nine to five hours because they're not open after that. I don't have a choice to put those off any other time. And when I don't get the, you know, when people are not acknowledging, you know, schedules that have been set in, in advance, especially when the meeting schedule was the one that changed, I have to rethink my, my flexibility to, to accept city meeting schedules during basically my time, my family's time and my, and, and my family's time. That, that's it.
Thank you. I was the understanding, everybody accepted that 3:30 meeting. So I'm gonna check into that because if we have a member that's not able to make it, we typically don't start the meetings early. But I was the understanding, everybody, including you, Councilmember Park, agreed to that, that 3:30 meeting, but I'll double check.
And I had not.
Don't make it a habit to plan it if we don't have the full council there. So we'll look into that. But again, the, the motion on the floor is to agendize this discussion for, for later. So Assistant City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, and can I have, who was the sec, the maker of the, the second?
Okay, we have, Councilmember Becker made the motion and I believe.
I think I seconded it.
I think it was Karen.
Thank you. Councilmember Watanabe? Um, you know, I, I'm just gonna say something. I've been really quiet and I'm just gonna say something. You know, I'm hearing all this discussion about people's calendars and changing times and accommodations, you know? I, I'm just gonna say right now, I served on the T-PAC for the last three years and there was a plan in place for the last, I don't know how many years before me. And all of a sudden, we have a new council member and her schedule does not accom, is not, her schedule cannot be accommodated because of the T-PAC meeting and when it's scheduled. And so six people, not, not even everybody in, in the city Santa Clara, there are city of San Jose folks that now have had to change their schedules, city of Santa Clara staff have had to change. And I've had to change mine because of one person. So, you know, you have to remember, you're not just dealing with one person. There's a lot of people involved. And a lot of these schedules have been in place for a long time. And it's fit our staff's schedule. Our staff to me is more, their time is more important because of the work that they do. And they always make themselves available to us. We need to be respectful of their time. And, and, and when meetings are, are scheduled, they can't just be changed willy-nilly just to accommodate your schedule. And, and as it was, my whole schedule got changed up as a result. And when I had everything in place. But I worked with it. I worked with it. I wasn't able to go to the meeting. So, you know, you just have to work with things sometimes. This is, like the mayor said, this is a part-time job. And we all try to do our part. We do work for the residents as best that we can. And, but I will say going forward, since the, since this new council started, that we have been meeting every week until all hours, starting at 3:30, four o'clock in the afternoon, going until all hours of the night. And even our staff got, had to stay late in the middle of, of, of a storm, having to drive home at 12 o'clock at night during a storm, to following each other to make sure that they got home safely. That's not fair to our staff. They're, they're starting at seven o'clock in the morning. Go, and then coming into a council meeting, going until 11 o'clock at night. That's not fair to our staff because then they have to turn around and come right back here within less than six or seven hours. So, you know, if we're gonna work on this, I ask that everybody, just be considerate of everybody's time. We're here to serve the people and, and be respectful of other people's time. So I'll support the motion, but I hope that people really mean what they're saying they want to accomplish here. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Vice Mayor Shaw Hall?
Thank you, Mayor.
I was hoping we'd just vote on this and.
I know, I, I know. I, I know, but now that it's on the table, I have to comment something with me too.
Of course we do, yeah. Go ahead.
You know, we all have to, we all have to understand each other's issues. It's, and resident issues. Like, I know there, some jobs have flexibility, some jobs do not have flexibility. And if we cannot cooperate among each other for these simple reasons, like, what else? This, this is very simple problem to solve, basically. If somebody does not have a flexibility and we are trying that we will not cooperate with that, that's not a way to do business. And to staff, if we are getting late, I think we should suggest that they can come late in the morning. Like, we have to make those amendments so that they have their own flexible time, they can adjust it. If, if you're going to dwell in the night, nobody is here for themselves. Everybody over here, all seven of us are working for something, for the city and for the residents of the Santa Clara. If there is an issue which needs more deliberation, it's, it is for the positive benefit of all the residents. So let's not take this in a negative way, that meetings are going longer or we cannot accommodate one person for one. We all accommodate. We, at our, our own office, we accommodate. Somebody's having a doctor appointment or somebody want to have some issues, then, okay, you can start at 9:30 instead of eight, if you can, cannot come over there. So it's all how we are trying to accommodate each other. And I, I, I'll support the motion. Yes.
Yay. Okay, all right.
Councilmember Hardy?
What?
Oh, are we, are we doing roll call?
She was taking the vote? I literally am trying to vote. Okay, city manager, you have something to say? Please, let's, let's just vote. Can we finish? Please, city manager?
I do. I, I just want to remind that we, we work under our MLUs or our labor agreements. And there, everyone has the, the opportunity to flex their schedule. However, the workload does not allow. And if you just look at these last two days, staff has already put in nearly 35 hours. And we still have to put out a packet in the morning and then turn around and start doing PowerPoints. And so the, this idea of, of having hours where you. And so the this idea of um, of having um, hours where you can flex, it just realistically, it doesn't exist because of evening meetings. And so I will put that in writing, but we are in a regulated labor environment with our MLUs. I know there was a comment that um, that there, you know, that there were, there wasn't that kind of discretion. And the council needs to be aware of that as you make decisions of how you use our time. Because um, there, we we will have to look at this going forward. It isn't just um, finite, is what I want to say.
Thank you, and I think this is a, I'm glad council member Becker brought this forward because it's a great way for us, we have to manage these meetings better than we are, because.
And it's so late, I meant to say infinite, it's not infinite, it is.
We're not serving the public, that's our job to serve the public, and we're not serving the public if if we can't even get through an agenda in less than 12 hours. Um, councilmember Park.
So I saw that uh, city attorney Doyle had his hand up, I don't know if he had a comment.
When I call on you, it's for you to speak, so go ahead.
Understood, but I think that in some cases, if the city attorney, especially the city attorney, has something to say, I would like like to hear that. I'm just saying that if there are people that, especially city attorney, has something to say, it would be nice to hear what he has to say before I I say my piece. I I I do hear, I do hear what council member Watanabe has to say. But I will say, there is no such thing as the most important or least important person when it comes to city council meetings. I I think about the filmmaker Jim Jarmusch, who says, who's the most important person when you're filming a scene? Is it the director, is it the actors, is it the person stopping traffic down the, at the end of the street so that the actors don't get, don't get hit by cars? And the short answer is, everyone's important to making the scene. And I think that we need to to recognize that. I do appreciate city staff when they stay late, because I know when when meetings go late, um, and you will see me sometimes, I've been going to the to city hall early in the mornings. Well, not early, I've been going there in the mornings. Um, and I see the, you know, or or see the same people there in the morning. So I appreciate that they were there at night and they 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 are there in the mornings again. Uh, at the same time, the fact that we are one of the only cities that has a part-time city council, and I want to stress that, part-time city council, we will always have this issue because we cannot guarantee that anyone or everyone that gets the, that's elected to city council will have the same or even similar schedules. And I think that we need to understand what the effect is. Other cities, I think, uh, can go into a flow, they can, they can set schedules a little bit more easily because it is their full-time job. But in this case, um, A, the job that I have today may not even be the job I have, you know, next year. So that schedule may change, and we need to to deal with the realities of how we, the city of Santa Clara, has set up this, the the role of city council. We need to understand that. Also, even if you don't have a job, there are families, especially during the time of COVID, especially during the time when you have um, family status or health status changes, there will always be changes. And the fact that that there are a lot of us ju, makes that job a little bit harder, I understand that. But we all need to work together to do this. Calling other people out because your schedule changed because of their inability, of somebody else's inability to to move their schedule, I don't think that's productive. Uh, I will, I would love to say, well, you know, you had to change your schedule because uh, somebody else had some other kind of conflict. Well, everyone is here to get the job done, and that means that they're here to get the job done, whether that's at 3:30 in the afternoon, whether it's at the the scheduled time a year ago, you know, what the what the schedule was a year ago, or if the meeting goes until 1 o'clock in the morning. And I think that everyone here is dedicated and resolved to do this job. Now the question is, how do we make this, you know, easy? And how do we make this inclusive so that we can all participate? Including the residents, including the audience. Because even if the audience doesn't say anything, they are the most critical people in this meeting.
And this is exactly why we need to talk about meeting management. I think there is a member of the public I missed earlier, Linda, go ahead.
Hello, I was just calling in again because I wanted to maybe offer a friendly suggestion of perhaps having a timer on the council members when they speak, uh, much like they do in, say, a school board meeting. Because it seems like some people suffer from last worditis a little bit, and it's dragging these meetings out for the public and you guys, and it's pretty hard to listen to, and it's very unfair. And I think there is a better way to do it. And as far as the scheduling that you guys are kind of bickering about, everyone kind of knew what they were signing up for with this part-time job. And if it's not working out with your other work schedules, then maybe this wasn't the job for you. And that's something maybe some of you should consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, and those are my thoughts exactly, because I think that um, this is gonna give us an opportunity. Um, Robert's Rules has a really good um, guideline for uh, different types of meetings and the number of times people can speak and and those kinds of things. So I think it really gives us an opportunity to do that. Because, again, I I wanted to remind councilmember Park that the only city in our county that has a full-time city council is San Jose. Every other city has a part-time city council, so I don't know where you got your information. But for the most part, everyone is part-time and paid for part-time. Uh, listen, I have a full-time job, I had babies while I was on the council. I had, I used to have to bring, have my husband bring my children over so I could nurse them during breaks. So, you know, hey, you make it work, it's what you sign up for, we all have to be flexible. I get that. City attorney, your hands up, because I really want to call this vote.
Very, very briefly, I just want to remind the public that it's not a question of, you know, us getting up at um, you know, not getting up at 7:30 and getting up at 9:30 or something. Wait, there there's a whole bunch of work that the that, not just the city attorney's office, but the this, the rest of the city staff is doing, that is just work that the public doesn't even see. It's it's all the things that we're doing behind the scenes, making the city run. This is a huge corporation, a billion-dollar corporation that we're making run. And um, it's, it, the time that we have to spend at a council meeting is time that we can't spend doing the public's business behind the scenes. That's 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 the only thing I wanted to say, and um.
Thank you.
And I hope you'll consider that as as you work with with council member Becker. And yeah, and I, and of course, I'm available for any kind of questions about Robert's Rules, um, if you want to tap into that.
I think so, because I I listen to Santa Clara Unified School District Board meetings, and they have a nice system too. So I think there's some examples out there.
All I had.
What we can do. Okay, thank you, assistant city clerk, go ahead, let's have the vote on this, to put this on a future agenda.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Next, we have reports of members and special committees, does any member of the council have a report they'd like to give? Okay, seeing none, uh, city manager executive director report.
Nothing to report out.
All right, um, I don't think we have any adjournments this evening, so may I please have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Becker, second by councilmember Jane. Assistant city clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, good, good evening, good night.